I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, March 21st. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In the essence of time, we will not have an invocation today. Unfortunately, there's no one, no one passed away that day, which is a wonderful thing. Okay, roll call when you're ready.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Lovell?
Here.
Councilmember Schickling?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Ponce?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here.
And Scott Campbell is attending us via Zoom.
And we can see him, okay. Are there any announcements or written communications?
No, ma'am.
Department head reports?
Good evening, everyone. Orin Karstarfen, Harbor Master. Since my last report Tuesday, March 7th, patrol moored 190 boats for a total of 1,302 nights, which is quite a drop-off. Obviously, with all the storms, everything's been quite slow. Patrol did five warnings or advisements of municipal code violations, 29 public assists, and 124 security patrols of the harbor facilities and surrounding waters. I'm happy to report that the mold float five refurbishment and repair has been completed on time. The floats have been installed, and aside from a few odds and ends, we should be back in service starting this weekend. That's all I have to report.
And the pump house is going to be inspected, and then we're good to go.
Right. The Department of Boating and Waterways here, people are already using it. They really like it, so we're really happy about that.
Wonderful, thank you. No questions of Orin, I'm sorry. Chief?
Mike Walagria, Fire Chief. During the storms, we'd had some, we did some patrols, checked on some road blockages, notified the proper authorities to remove what needed to be removed. We had some small, well, not us, Baywatch had some small intrusion of water from the golf course. The ditches up there overflowed a little bit, so the runoff came just like it did after the floods right through the golf course, almost into our station. We were good, but Baywatch, they got a little flooded inside there. There's nothing big, it was all in the cement floor. Code enforcement, this is mostly for all the residents that don't have stickers on their vehicles. We've been very generous the last couple of weeks, but DMV's coming, especially after DMV's coming, stickers are due by April 3rd. They're gonna hit it hard. We did a couple 4:00 a.m.s, and we got like a lot of tickets from 4:00 to 6:00.
Wow.
People not parking where they're supposed to, people saying they're gonna park off-street, but they're not, so we're gonna be doing a lot more early morning and possibly some late-night patrols after DMV comes, when we've given everyone months to get this fixed. So, it's coming. Yeah, there's a lot, so if you know someone, please reach out, put it out, get your stickers. We've been very nice, but after DMV, we're, they're not gonna be nice. They're gonna do it multiple times. They're gonna, they could get you every 24 hours. Any questions?
I actually did. I don't know if you may have this information, but you know, with all the rain, a lot of people have been having leaky roofs. If possibly some people haven't noticed, is there any signs that they've been looking for mold?
No, once it all dries up, it's, that one's tough.
Yeah.
I'll get with John, and we could try and get, put something together of what, what people will look out for.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Evening, Mayor, City Council, Sergeant Grayson Klein. Since our last meeting, March 7th, it's been extremely slow. We've had 25 calls for service, 70 self-generated observations from the deputies. They've issued eight tickets, including city stickers, expired registration, as well as moving violations. There's been zero arrests. On the ticket side, I've put in the newspaper numerous times regarding underage driving and the warnings we've been giving. And yesterday, I did a spot check on my own. I went and parked up at the sand trap. I backed in, I waited for the kids to come out of school. And the first 10 cars that I walked up to, none of them had licenses.
Damn.
This is it for the warnings. Irma's going to put it on our social media page again this week, so that there is no reason why parents don't understand or say they haven't seen that their kids shouldn't be driving. 10 cars that I went up to is unacceptable, and it's a danger to everybody else out here. We're getting these cars packed with kids that don't have the experience driving, and we're done giving warnings.
Is that golf carts and Scions and those, or?
It was nine golf carts and one vehicle.
Okay.
After 10, I stopped, and I went back and rallied up at the station and said, okay, this is...
Right.
And so there will be, the next checkpoint or sting is gonna be all of us out there with tickets ready. And so that the parents know, anybody listening, the parents also get a citation. They also have to go over town and appear for this ticket. So that's coming in the very near future.
So that'll be the ramifications, they have to go to the mainland?
Absolutely. And it can impact them getting their driver's license until they're 18 years old.
This is none of that, though, will be thrown out with the DA. It's not, it's a whole different ballgame, right?
I can't determine what they do, ma'am. I can issue the tickets, but oftentimes, they don't get their license until they're 18. I can't speak for what the court system does.
So are you calling that an infraction or a misdemeanor?
It's a misdemeanor.
Okay, so just...
But it's juvenile. These, these are gonna be juvenile court.
Okay, so it's hopefully something will stick.
It goes down a different road, like when we discussed, it's gonna go down a different path than the other one.
Yeah, okay, great.
And Grayson, reiterate that they have the liability of not getting their license until they're 18.
Absolutely, yes, sir. And Irma, like I said, we'll put that all in the social medias, that the kids and the parents can also see that this week. And we'll cite the sections. They can look them up themselves and, and read exactly what it states. We're going to be doing some ABC operations coming up in April and getting set up for the summer. I don't know what the scope of those is going to be yet. I mean, we're going to check every single location. The sheriffs are going to be going with ABC to every single establishment that sells alcohol on this island with the supervisors from ABC. I don't know if we're going to be doing shoulder taps or any undercover operations yet, but this is coming. Also, Detective Myers and I are working on a, kind of a large fraud case on the island. We've got five victims. Where people are stealing checks out of the mail that are coming from our post office. The checks are being paid to the island company, but the checks are being washed, and the island company's not getting them, and the victims. These checks are being cashed in Minnesota, Florida, and they're for significant amounts of money, $6,000, $7,000, so... Luckily, we have a very experienced detective, Randy Myers, and he writes search warrants on every one of those to find out who the owner of the account is, where they, where they're being cashed at. So, he's real busy working on that right now, but we just started getting this the last couple of days, and he's knee-deep in it now.
Yeah. Other questions?
Yes, regarding the no licenses, is there a way that we could, or I don't even know the process, but maybe on the social media posts and work with the school to get the kids sign up for their permit or whatever next step is next? Or prepare them for when the DMV does get here, so you know, we can get the kids their licenses and...
It seems that a lot of people know that. Like Gabby was, Christie was in here with her daughter. I mean, there's a lot of people, like, maybe just 'cause she's here. But I would talk to Danny Mello, his kid signed up to take his written test, so I think they might be doing it.
Just if we get more information out, just, a lot of kids have parents who are working all day.
Yeah.
And maybe don't have time or an idea of where to look to get them signed up. So if we can put it on social media or the schools, since they're there every day.
Yeah.
Something to help them out.
Right, and we're gonna talk about that, 'cause the DMV is coming here soon in April, so we're gonna give those dates, and there are already, sign-ups are already available, so we'll get that information out.
Okay, thank you.
And when I did that, one child had their license, one had the permit, and I've stopped some, even some of the kids you mentioned, with their permits, and they're driving with their parents, because just 'cause they have their permit, still doesn't give them permission to drive the vehicle. So, I know that the school's been telling them that they know what they're supposed to do.
They also can't drive with other kids under a certain age.
Exactly, 25.
Yeah, 25.
Yes, ma'am.
That's gonna be on the test I have to take.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. Got a sequence here, I'm always up first, you know, but...
You sat on the wrong side.
Yeah, I've been a little busy the last few days, but...
I guess.
So, two items tonight, just to keep it going here. The green pier was supposed to start mobilize today, but the barge canceled. So, and it's gonna be shifted a whole week. I think we'll be out there for about five days, once the contractor, because remember, it's five piles that we're working on, on this first piece, okay? There will be really a five-year plan of work, but this first piece is that five pile. So, we expect next Tuesday, we'll mobilize, and then we'll get probably half the work done those, that first week, and then the following week, we'd be on the other side of the pier. And people will still be able to go out in the pier and do what they do, but we'll be in our own little work area and keep everybody safe and keep things going. So that should get us ready for Easter vacation to be over here. And then the second item is storm. We had predictions of high wind, winds did come for a while. We had predictions of maybe three inches of rain, and then, you know, here it comes again, right? And then what was concerning also was the possibility of thunderstorms, because that's when we see that potential for flash flood or mud flows to happen. Thunderstorms didn't show up. We actually were well-prepared for this event. You know, we were out there, whatever would come, we had equipment and people staffed and had their own areas to look over. So, this storm really helped clean up a few things that were out there. You know, like a good example is Avalon Canyon. There was still lots of sediment on the road when that, that storm actually washed some of that debris away. But that first storm kind of walloped us, and we saw a couple big rockfalls on Pendley Beach Road. We're starting to see the whole Crescent Hillside starting to get activated again and coming right down there, right by the yacht club and at the end of Crescent. So, you have an item tonight, so that we can take care of that. And we're just seeing rock fall along, everywhere along some of our road. Our drainage actually did very well. The other big item, though, is up in Roaring Canyon, as you know, we had that mud flow. And if you've been up there, you know, it was significant, you know? And that morning, I had called Jim Hoffman with Jordan Construction and asked him, "Hey, are you available to help us?" And he goes, "Hey, Bob, I'm trying to come down." So he was coming down on a piece of equipment. I was heading up, and I couldn't even find my way up there, with the water was so significant, and the mud flow was very significant. So, at the end of that, though, what we found, though, was that there was a lot of debris, some of that debris dam, just like we had on that Valentine's-a-day event in 2019, I believe it was, was that debris dam builds up, and then it lets loose, and then that mud flow happens. And a lot of that is from, you know, whatever's being stored up in some of those canyons or fences or whatever it is, we need to focus on making sure that even those aren't designated floodplains, they are during a flash flood, a flood plain. And we need to make sure that those are kept clear for the water to be able to flow in its proper location, and that the maintenance is done in those ditch lines along the roadways and all the way back out to the ocean. That way, we'd be able to manage that water, so it's not eroding away the sediment, now bringing the sediment into where the ditches are. And what's concerning up in that area is you've got a lot of facilities. You have storage, you have our household waste, we have our animal shelter up there, we have our wastewater treatment plant, we have all of SCE's facilities, and then we have the road up to the dump into our quarry, you know? And so if any of that goes out, we're pretty well shut down, and that would be ugly. So that was our effort when we went up to there, was to make sure that nothing impacted those plants, and that was our fight that, that day for about four hours. We were very successful with it. We still, there's lots of cleanup. We know that there's some things for the future that we need to do, maybe some better protection for flood, flood walls or whatever for those plants, to make sure that whatever water comes down needs to at least stay in the roadway and find its way to the ocean, even if it's a mud, a debris-laden flow. It needs to find its way and not impact those facilities. So, we, we feel like, you know, those are the things we need to work on. We, we do have the household hazardous waste there. It seemed to be fine at this point, so, and our, where our animal control facility in elevation when you drive up there.
Wow.
So, lots to do with that ahead. Okay?
Yeah.
Any questions?
No, but thank you and your crew and everyone. I mean, it's, with everything else you get, 'cause you know, we get our Friday report from Jamie, and not only that, there's other stuff you all have been doing, so thank you.
Okay.
It's a lot of work.
And we'll be prepared for anything else that comes at us, okay?
Yeah, thank you. Wow.
Good afternoon, Council. Matt Baker, Finance Director. Just real quick, I wanted to touch on January visitor-driven revenues. Cross-channel warfage was down 17%. TOT from hotels was down 14%, but I do have a couple hotels with payments outstanding that finance will be following up with this week. Again, with a really strong first half of the year, I'm not all that concerned with bad number or relatively bad numbers for January, likely heading into February and March as well. But it does kind of bring in mind, as we're getting into budget season, that part of the reason I'm not all that worried is we weren't requiring record-breaking years just to break even in the budget. And so that's something to look at when I'm coming up with the revenue estimates, is where I'm budgeting versus kind of historically what we've gone in, 'cause we don't want to be in a situation where we need record-breaking tourism year after year just to balance the budget. And so just something to keep an eye on as we touch on the budget coming up in future meetings. Hold me accountable, look at what my revenue estimates are, and that way, when, you know, we have a particularly bad winter, you know, we don't have to worry quite as much. Other than that, I'll have the full report published by the end of the week for January's numbers.
Great. Questions?
I did just want to add, for the budget discussion, Mammoth announced today they'll be open until July, so I have a feeling we'll be seeing a slight dip, like we do normally in years like this with tourism for snow people, so...
I like to think everyone's gonna want warm weather and beaches, pina coladas, so I'll take the optimist on that, but... But that does bring up a good point as far as budget timeline. Kind of tentatively, what we're looking at is the second meeting of April. We're gonna discuss revenues and kind of revenue estimates. And again, with all these kind of budget meetings, everything I'm gonna be presenting is gonna be a draft, subject to change based on information as we get it. But that second meeting in April, we'll discuss revenue estimates. The two meetings in May, we'll be discussing the operating budgets as well as the CIP budget. With the first meeting in June, where you'll get a full draft of the budget to review with the goal of the second meeting, the meeting where we adopt the budget, the second meeting of June. So again, that's kind of the timeline of what we're looking at. Similar to last year, the goal is to not need a special study session and do it all at the meetings. We always, you know, if there is discussion or there is a need or want from council to have a separate meeting, we can always do that. But at least right now, the plan is to try to incorporate it in the meetings like we did last year. So I guess with that, if there's any questions?
So the question is, if we have pet projects or something that we want, at what point do we present those to you?
You can present them to us now. This, I mean, the sooner the better, 'cause then it gives us more time to try to incorporate that in. What I can also do is maybe at the meeting in April, kind of open up some time in the presentation for that purpose. We, my plan right now would be the second meeting, or the first meeting of May, to do the CIP discussion. That way, it's also early enough in the process to where we can really factor that in for June. But the sooner we have the information, the better, so there's, I don't think anything that would stop us from, from taking that feedback or input now.
'Cause it doesn't mean that, let's say I had something and you had something, it doesn't mean that you can all say, "Oh yeah, we're all gung-ho." But I want that discussion with some of the things that I might be thinking. I'm sure you all have some things that you might be thinking of as well, yeah?
So we'll make sure in the, maybe the April meeting, we can set up some time in that one for, for that purpose.
Okay, great.
All right.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. We'll be finally be putting in the new infill at Joe Machado Field. It's finally come in. Hellis, the provider, will not be able to come, though, until May 3rd and 4th. But the info product is here on the island, starting tomorrow, and will be stored up at Joe Machado Field. That means there will be 20 super sacks that are on 4x4 pallets and are seven feet high. Some of them we will store within the courtyard, but the majority of them will be up in those parking spaces up above at Joe Machado. So we will have a little bit of an inconvenience up there for about a month, but then we'll have a safer playing surface. We recently just had the Catalina Marathon that happened on March 11th. I got some of the numbers here. I mean, it was a great marathon, seemed like there was no major issues that had gone on. Nobody medevaced off or hurt, but except, outside of five foot, five-pound shoes from running in the mud. Our very own Ephraim Moreno, our code enforcer, took 36th overall out of 1,252 people who participated.
Wow.
So I don't think any of the golf carts will be able to outrun him, so I'd be happy to say. So yes, there was 1,252 people who participated. 800 of them actually were in the marathon, and the rest were in our 5Ks and 10Ks, and those are the number of registrants, which is up over 250 from the year before. But every year, there's a bunch of people who just show up and just jump in the run. But that's just for the registrants. There is also eight people, two of them local. One is Frank Menudo, and his wife are one of eight people who did the Triple Crown. That was the 50-50K, the 50-miler, the half marathon, and the marathon. So congratulations to them for finishing all the Triple Crown for Avalon's races.
Wow.
Did George do all, all three too? So, three of the eight are locals. How awesome is that? Our firemen, no one, the fire will be able to outrun our own people, and this is awesome. So, in that respect, we have a bunch of, we have a, we have a bunch of events coming up through April, if weather permits. April 1st, we will be have, there will be the underwater cleanup that's done through the Wrigley Institute, and that will be in the morning till 11:00 a.m. And then right after that, there will be a short course run of the Buffalo Relay Race, which is the one-man outriggers. And then Sunday, April 2nd, those one-man outriggers are going all the way to Newport. They're taking off to race across 42 miles in those one-man canoes. So go out, check out those races, and maybe even get certified as quickly as you can so you can help us in cleaning up our harbors out here for the underwater cleanup. April 8th, we are bringing back Easter, and that will be at Descanso Beach. We have a new Easter bunny coming. You'll see he'll be bright, new, colorful outfit. It will be for 0- to 3-year-olds, will be at 10:00 a.m. 4- to 6-year-olds will be at 10:15. 7- to 10-year-olds, 10:30, 11- to 17, 10:45. And then on April 15th, we now have kite day. We have moved the kite festival from February to April, which is actually officially kite month. So we finally figured that out, and hopefully this, these winds keep up. The rain stops, but the wind keeps up. Right now, you can buy kites from us here at the City Hall, and, or bring your own kite and meet us up at Joe Machado Field from 11:00 to 2:00 on April 15th. Is there any other questions?
Nope, good.
Just sorry, one area of review, the, I think I sent it email, but it may not have sent through. The scoreboard at Joe Machado's been shorting out since the rains.
Yeah, so...
And I don't know if there's a permanent solution. We can also figure out for the plugs and the ability to operate that, but the kids either mess with it, in this instance, it wasn't the kids, it was actually the board shorting, so I just wanted to make sure that was on everybody's radar to check out.
When I first heard about, we're trying to figure out the board itself, the, the big board, is fine. It's actually, it's the receiver, that, yeah, that's, that's the issue. So we're looking into that and maybe looking at getting a new one. It's just that people play with the cord while they're taking and doing that, so they've actually pulled the cord out. So, so we're looking at trying to get that fixed, as well as maybe even having to have to go out and buy a new one.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we need the City Manager report, if you have one.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to reiterate a couple things have been brought up a little bit tonight. The DMV will be here in Council Chambers, April 10th through the 13th. Appointments can be scheduled now, they're in the lobby. You can get, get on there if your kids need to sign up. They are able to register and take their autoet tests, so please do that. Also, part of this is, as we've tied into, our amnesty program is leading up to this, so that means we only have one more week roughly of the amnesty program of people that want to sign up for that, because once the amnesty program is closed and the DMV is here, our position is there's no real excuses left at that point. We've given you every chance in the world to get everything valid and cleaned up. Next, in the category of the most obvious statement, Middle Red Reservoir, is that capacity?
Yes.
We're good there, so rain, the, the argument that, well, at least we're getting rain, we're done. Okay, so we're good there. The Assemblymember Lowenthal's visit was canceled. As we all know, last week, it's been rescheduled to April 4th, so let's hope that that takes place. And same thing with Congressman Garcia. We tentatively have a date that we're shooting for on April 10th for Congressman Garcia's staff to come back to the island. Yesterday, in Sacramento, AB 705, which is the Avalon Autoet Bill, was before California Assembly. They put it on the consent calendar. We were prepared to have witness statement and go forward, but they put it on the consent calendar. Did pass the consent calendar, but speaking with Eric O'Donnell this afternoon, there were some questions that came out for the, I believe, the Transportation Committee, so they've sent those, just got those late this afternoon. We'll, we'll provide those answers and hopefully get that on the books soon. And if that happens, it'll go into effect January 1st of next year and protect kind of where we are with those 130-inch and less vehicles, so... Appreciate everything Eric O'Donnell did, and then Assemblymember Lowenthal's office pushing that forward. I do want to mention that today, I received communication from Josh Lowenthal's office, and I do really appreciate it, 'cause they were just reaching out to see if there's anything we need with all the storms we've been having, all the weather events, anything they can do for us on that level. And, and it's nice to know they're reaching out and calling us rather than us calling them. I mean, it's really appreciated. So I let them know that, yes, we have a couple things on the agenda tonight, declaring an emergency, and then we are gonna start reaching out to them soon, so it's nice to know they're at the ready for that.
And they're gonna be watching, but I think they said they're gonna be watching the show.
They'll be watching, yeah, tonight. And then finally, I just want to welcome Jocelyn Francis, our new Assistant City Manager, is on the island. Today was her second day. She started yesterday. It's quite the, the busy two days so far, but, but it's been great having her here. We look forward to, to getting her on board and active with council and everything we have going on on the island.
Can we put her face on the front? Can we have her go up front?
Sure, I don't know that that's on anything other than the back of her head from a camera angle.
Or come this way or something.
If Jocelyn wants to come up and introduce, introduce herself at the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you so much for having me. I'm so excited to be here. Everybody's been so welcoming to my husband and I, and we're so excited to be on this island, so thank you so much.
Welcome, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Attorney, do you have anything to report?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, Councilmember reports. Now, let me ask, it's the goal to get kind of out of here by about 5:00 with our business, if at all possible, correct?
That's the goal, all right. What time do we have planning kind of doing the joint session?
The, the planning meeting is, the public notice said the planning meeting would start at 5:00 p.m., but as long as we're later, we'll be fine.
Okay, but we'll try to, yeah, we'll try to keep it going then, okay. All right, Councilmember reports.
I'll go first. Just have a couple of meetings coming up this week, one with the CPUC regarding decarbonization of buildings. There was one regarding insurance classifications that I thought would be prudent to attend.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah. And then a couple on broadband that are coming up, along with a meeting for the connectivity group. And then just wanted to also... And then just wanted to also extend thanks to Congressman Lowenthal. He reached out regarding the autoet bill and mentioned the storm and the declaration of emergency. And both Clayton and he reached out immediately to city staff. So really appreciate them stepping up and being available.
Good, Mary?
Oh, I just got back from vacation, so yeah, nothing to report.
Nothing for me this week as well, but I did also want to, one thing, Public Works, because you guys have been doing a heck of a lot, so thank you. And thank you as well to Josh Lowenthal's office. They all, they constantly reach out. And I, out of the three years we've been doing this, I appreciate that so, so much.
They call us all, which is really nice.
Nice, very nice.
And Congressman Garcia's office has been real competitive too.
Yes, they're starting, so I love it.
It's nice.
And, and, and State Senator Lena Gonzalez's office as well, so.
Okay.
There's a lot of levels they've been really great at, which is wonderful.
I attended CalCity's Public Policy Committee meeting on community services. It was a great meeting, and it's always fun midway where you lose connection and then you try to get back in. But I think that may have been more on my side, but it was a really good meeting.
I'm not, not going to report anything at this moment. So we have oral communication. This is an opportunity for members of the community to speak on items not on the agenda. You'll be limited to two minutes and no action will be taken.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Bryce Noel, acting as Chair of the Love Catalina Island Board of Directors. Briefly, I want to talk a little bit about what we've been doing. In December, we engaged with Charney Associates to provide analysis and training related to board governance. The Chamber of Love Catalina is a challenging entity regarding governance. Since 1998, the City Council has had a total of four mayors, and Madam Mayor, I believe you're on your ninth year. In that same time, Love Catalina has had 28 different board chairs, all with different agendas and personalities. We are large. There are currently 19 professionals with unique opinions and priorities. We also have both real and perceived potential conflicts of interest in that most of the decisions the board makes affect all of our individual organizations. Enter Charney Associates, who have a 31-year history of governance support for over 260 organizations and a sterling reputation for making boards of all shapes and sizes more effective. After months of researching and the organization being surveyed, on March 6th, we held an all-day governance education session. I'm grateful to the 22 individuals that were in attendance, including two of you up on the stage. This exercise serves several purposes. One, to educate and increase awareness on proper governance procedures. This helps us clarify the extent of our authority over the organization and gives Jim freedom to innovate. It helps us understand our bylaws and board policies, but also update them to provide for greater efficiency and effectiveness and stimulate growth and cooperation through a shared educational growth experience. I can now say that I watched a lawyer, a business owner, and a chief operating officer play with food coloring to prove, to prove an invaluable lesson on the difference between management and governance. Perhaps the most immediate and relevant outcome of the day was a greater understanding of our collective goals and purpose as we look forward to April 20th and meeting with all of you. I hope it will be the first of multiple joint meetings with council. I believe our experience will be critical to the collaborative effort. Teamwork makes the dream work, and I'm confident that our organization meet, we will come up with ideas for how to make the island better for everyone.
You must have, you must have practiced at home, huh? Good job.
Thank you, Bryce.
Thank you, Bryce. Appreciate it. Anybody else?
Mayor Marshall, I have three communications.
Yes.
Dear Council, please ask Sheriff Captain King to provide some details to yourself and the public about the Sheriff Department's recent switch to their new radio system and local tactical channel. Many island residents, Mayor Marshall included, own scanners to stay updated on local emergency situations and information has always been able to be monitored local, excuse me, and information and have always been able to monitor local first responders. With the new system, the Sheriff's Department's channels have been completely encrypted and citizens are no longer able to have the information they once were. I can understand this for certain mainland applications, but in our small town community and the island as a whole, it seems unnecessary and a detriment to us citizens who like to know what is happening in their community. Please be advised of this information and inquire to Captain King if he is willing to explore any avenues of making radio communications from Avalon LASD transparent to the public again. For example, asking the radio technicians to unencrypt Avalon LTAC while leaving the metro channels secure or providing an online audio stream via a website like Broadcastify.com. This has been done before in places like Orange County where the public strongly convinced the fire communications authorities to provide online audio streams when fire communications were inadvertently made encrypted and could not easily be reversed. Thank you for your time and understanding, as well as Captain King's. Gabriel Saldana, Avalon resident and communications enthusiast.
You don't need to respond to that, but you've got it, okay.
Good morning. I'm submitting the following for inclusion on the 3/21/23 City Council meeting public comment item. I'm happy to share with the City Council staff and residents an upcoming Environmental Justice Interagency Summit this Wednesday, March 22nd at 9:00 a.m. We'll be holding two panels on environmental inspections and complaints with presentations on community engagement and the South Coast AQMD Annual Admissions Report. Those interested can register to attend this event, this virtual event. I've attached our program flyer with additional information. We hope to see you all there. Regards, Brandon L. Keith, Senior Public Affairs Specialist, South Coast AQMD. And then the last one. Dear Mayor Marshall, we all know drugs and substance abuse in our, in our towns is a disaster. Would you believe me if I told you I have a solution? I did double check with, with the city attorney that I have to read this one. I understand your, would you believe me if I told you I have a solution? I understand your skepticism, but hear me out, and I'll show you how we can make a difference in the lives of so many families in your town. It may take a little vision. Several years ago, my team and I were able to reduce the number of heroin-related deaths in Oregon. During this campaign, we had the support of the governor, state representatives, members of Congress, county commissioners, and of course, several mayors. Working together, we made a huge difference. I am doing the same thing here in the Los Angeles area, and I need your support and leadership. What is it? In a nutshell, we are producing a television movie that depicts the life of a teenage boy who makes a bad choice and becomes a teenager drug addict. This type of teaching has proven effective for many reasons, but the main takeaway is it works. When the movie is finished, we will promote it, broadcast on television, radio, print, electric ads, posters, social media, direct mail, and more. It will be available for streaming on the internet. We are also creating a comic book version of the story and discuss guidelines and other support material. Our funding comes from sponsors whom we promote as we promote this message. Conclusion, it doesn't matter how we get here. Drug overdose, deaths, crime, homelessness, mental illness, traffic fatalities, and all the other terrible things caused by drugs and substance abuse. What matters is where we go from here. The problem has been getting worse for decades. So when, so when do we say enough? I'm asking for your help in any form, because if we don't do this, who will? Call me at 310-944-8791, and let's set up a time so we can explain how we can work together to turn the tide of this devastating problem. You can learn more at SavingOurChildrenCampaign.com. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Tom Monson, Director, Saving Our Children Campaign.
What is the phone number?
It is 310-944-8791.
Thank you, Tom.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Okay, now we will have a presentation by Eric O'Donnell's office.
Eric was on the island yesterday. He expected to be here in person, but because of the anticipated weather, he ended up getting back off the island yesterday. And I think we have rescheduled this for the meeting on the 4th. Is that all right, having April 4th? So Eric will be here on the 4th and give his presentation.
Okay, excellent. All righty. Consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor. For consent calendar, first, item one, we have minutes. Seek approval of the minutes from March 7th, 2023 regular city council meeting. Number two, approve total expenditures for February 27th, 2023, through March 10th, 2023 totaling $1,028,079.3. Item three, annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. Council should have received this, so we would like to ask you to receive and file the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. Item four, adopt the City of Avalon cybersecurity policy by resolution and authorize the city manager or their designated need to amend the plan as necessary. Item five, authorize the city manager or his designated need to contract an on-call planning consultant for an annual cumulative total not to exceed $125,000.
Great. Do we'd like to pull anything, or is there a motion?
I'll move to approve items 1 through 5.
Second? I'll second, since we say anything. Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ponte?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Item number six?
General Business, item number six. This is related to improvements to the Green Pleasure Pier. Authorize the city manager to award a contract to the most responsive bidder for a not-to-exceed amount of $90,000 to paint the Green Pleasure Pier Harbor Master Building and approve a budget amendment of $38,000 to account number 10470-6547.
And that's just not throwing paint on it, is it? I mean, is that, there going to be some wood rod or anything like that or roof stuff?
Yes. Go ahead.
So it's going to have some carpentry involved?
Yeah.
Okay, so replacement of the siding, carpentry, stripping down, building back up, you know, sealing all the cracks.
Yes.
So that the, you know, because the environment out there is very extreme.
Sure.
You're out there on the very tip of the pier, so yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And then good coat, some epoxy paint, like we have in the other buildings, to match the other buildings.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion or questions on item six?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to award a contract to the most responsive bidder for a not-to-exceed amount of $90,000 to paint the Green Pleasure Pier Harbor Master Building and approve a budget amendment of $38,000 to account number 10470-6547.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ponte?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Item number seven.
Item number seven. This is a, another capital improvement project, seeking approval of the construction documents for the underground fuel tank replacement project. Authorize the city manager or his designated need to procure the replacement fuel tank and award a contract for a not-to-exceed sum of $200,000 to the most responsive bidder and authorize the city manager or his designated need to circulate and request for proposals from qualified firms to construct the retaining wall and foundational slab for the new fuel tanks.
Okay, so now we're ready for the construction, and we need to be completed with this project by November of this year. And so you'll see this take with three different procurements because of, we got to build the retaining wall in the planner and get that in the slab ready, and that could be done likely with a local contractor here. That's what we would hope. And then the procurement of the tank, which is a dual-walled concrete tank, that will take about four months lead time, and then it would be set within that enclosure. And then there would be aesthetic, aesthetic-looking enclosure with landscaping around it, so it hides all of that within that planner. See that oversees it took 25 of that.
Oh, there's always that kind of stuff, yeah. Okay, so, so then are we going to come in under budget because of that grant that we got? Or are we looking to?
That's part of that budget.
Add others, oh, that's part of the 700. Ew, got it. Okay. Motion?
I'll move to approve the construction documents for the underground fuel tank replacement project to authorize the city manager his designated procure the replacement fuel tank and award a contract for a not-to-exceed sum of $200,000 to the most responsive bidder and to authorize the city manager his designated circulate requests for proposals for qualified firms to construct the retaining wall and foundational slab for the new fuel tanks.
I'll second. Okay, moved in second, and call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ponte?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Item eight.
Item eight is seeking to declare a state of emergency for the 2023 atmospheric river incidents. And council, due to a series of natural phenomenon called atmospheric rivers, the city has received an unprecedented amount of precipitation and an increased number of wind events this year. The weather conditions have led to flooding, infrastructure failures, increased rock falls, mudslides along Pebbley Beach Road, Roaring Canyon, St. Catherine's Way, and the appearance of sinkholes along roadways and damage to city parks and facilities. Therefore, we're asking council to adopt a resolution making the appropriate findings and declare a local state of emergency due to the damages from the severe rain and winds to the city of Avalon.
Motion?
So moved.
Second?
I, I've been seconded.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Absolutely.
Mayor Potem Ponte?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. All righty, and last item.
Last item, item number nine. We are seeking authorization for emergency wall repair contract for repairs at the Crescent Avenue stairway. So we would be asking council to make a finding that emergency measures must be implemented to protect from the economic loss of both the city property and adjoining private property, as well as reduce the hazardous conditions from the landslide below the Crescent Avenue stairway. Make a finding that due to the need to respond with highly qualified contractor relative to work scope and public bidding is inefficient with this specific work scope and should be dispensed with. Number three, authorize the city manager or his designated need to negotiate and award a construction contract for a not-to-exceed amount of $300,000 to complete this work.
And is, just a quick question. Is all of the expense coming on the city or are we looking at others for partial assistance on this?
So potentially, this could be reimbursed through FEMA OES as a major project. So potentially, no guarantees on it, but.
But I mean, the mountainside, is it all because of the stairway or is the mountainside, I didn't think was ours, and there's private property on the thing? So is it still all of our?
So Crescent Avenue is the extension of Crescent Avenue all the way from one south side of town to the north side of town, and it ends at that property line before you get to that parcel where Times Tower is. And that's a set of right-of-way that was dedicated off of the official map of the city of Avalon, just like a roadway.
Right.
Okay, and, but it's a walkway there. Additionally, the city has ownership of that hillside down below, right to that property line approximately where the Yacht Club building is. And then from that point on, we just have St. Catherine's Way and Casino Way and the harbor, everything up on the hillside all the way around is then island company on that hillside from that point on. that hillside from that point on.
Okay, okay. And so then, the state of emergency that we just voted on, that would allow us to reach out for funds for stuff like this, and that's our possible reimbursement?
And it's already on that list, and that's what we'd be working on to hopefully get some reimbursement, some help on that.
Yeah, okay.
We did also receive three letters, I know I didn't, but everybody else did, from Cheryl Pipp, Blaney Haganow, and then also a forward of a letter from David Renton, just also urging that we do this.
Okay.
Then, I will make a motion, make a finding that emergency measures must be implemented to protect from the economic loss of both city property and adjoining private property, as well as reduce the hazardous conditions from the landslide below the Crescent Avenue stairway. Two, make a finding that due to the need to respond with a highly qualified contractor relative to the work scope, that public bidding is inefficient with this specific work scope and should be dispensed with. And three, authorize the city manager or his designated to negotiate and award a construction contract not to exceed $300,000 to complete the work.
I'll second.
Okay. I'll second.
Okay. And then, just with the question of if there's any additional engineering work that needs to be done with this, do we need to approve any budgetary needs for that, or is there a budget that you can approve up to a certain amount?
Plans are done.
We have them.
We have the environmental document done.
And that includes the pipe that was causing the additional issues, the drainage?
The, the pipe showed itself up, it's good, it finally showed itself up of what's happening underneath there. And we'll redirect that flow.
Okay.
But we're ready to go.
How do we change with that?
And we have two potential contractors that have shown interest, and we've been working with, so that'll help provide some competition to this, too.
Okay. There are motions and a second, call for the vote?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ponte?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Okay.
Mayor, if I could make a suggestion, we're, we have a planning scheduled, so it's already been posted, notified till at five, so we can't really start that early, but we do have chief with a update on, the safety update that councilmember Schickling had talked about, insurance and the fire safety and those, those issues, and e-bike, chief, if you wanna go ahead and do, are you ready to do that now, or? Okay. If you'd wanna do that now, we have a little, about 10 minutes before planning is scheduled, if we want.
Perfect.
Welcome to that, welcome back. So this is just a short, short presentation, we could talk, we're gonna talk about it again later in a few weeks. The state's gonna send us, send me in the city a letter saying, we already know we're in it, they redid the maps from 2007, they did them in 2022, saying, do you accept? This is what we proposed, this is what you're in, do you accept? There is possible liability if we don't accept, saying that, oh yeah, we're not in the fire, very high fire, severe safety zone, it's in there. So we'll just go through this real quick. The first maps were put out early, in 2007, they're supposed to be done every five years, but they're being done in, they were done in 2022. What does it measure, what's it based off of? It's based off science and data. They looked at potential fuel over a 50-year period. They looked at buildings being threatened, terrain, weather, blowing embers, proximity, proximity to wildland, fire history, and fire hazards in our area. So, some things for us to consider, for you guys to consider, staffing, resources, our water situation, our saltwater hydrants, freshwater hydrants. Will there be incidents on the mainland that day we have a fire? Will we be getting help? And then obviously, the weather. So staffing, three-man staff with our two LA County Fire guys up the canyon, they're not always in town, I'm not always in town, so sometimes, if our, if our guys are on a medevac or a medical call, and the paramedics are out of town, those guys are handling the ambulance, we get one guy showing up in a patrol with 200 gallons of water and a 60 GPM pump to a possible structure fire or wildland fire. So, I don't, I'll show you this later, it's just the history of getting into the zones, but this photo right here, I wanna show you guys, what's, what do you see in this photo?
Close proximity is when he calls.
Okay. Do you see any fire on the first floor?
No.
No, so-
Oh, that's embers?
Those houses are a lot farther apart than here, but this was a wind-driven fire that in December of 2022, in Laguna Beach, and all these homes caught fire from embers and the wind, all going into attics. So they had, they had all the staffing there, and they couldn't do anything to these homes. And our homes are a lot closer than that. This photo didn't come out very good, I have it here, I'll pass it around later. But it talks about, it shows, Dave Long and I went to Santa Barbara to take a class on wildland urban interface and home hardening. So this shows A, up, up there, it shows A, there's a fire on A, and that's a fence. So the fire from an ember hits the fence, it burns, starts burning the, the leaves and weeds down there, burns the fence, catches the leaves and stuff under the tree, the tree catches fire, the fire starts burning underneath the eaves of the house, that house catches fire, it's gone. B, same thing, it hits the fence, it starts, it hits the shed, the wind is blowing, it starts up against the vegetation on the house, and that house is gone. So it just shows walking around town, or, and during this class, we went up in the hills of Santa Barbara, and the homes were, obviously, they're on acres, but we were able to burn down almost every single home, saying like, they don't clean up their leaves, they don't have the proper, they gutter, not gutter, vents, screens on their vents, there's just a lot of different things that we're gonna try and educate the community on to do. That fire, the mainland fire, that's the Laguna Beach fire, looks like the terraces are on fire, and then ours right there. So, for us, on a good day, no wind, we get a structure fire or wildland fire, we've got our work cut out. Knock on wood, we've been good lately, we need to get there as quick as we can. During, in May of 2022, most of our guys, six of our 10 guys had COVID. So I worked on the floor, I worked as a captain during that time, we had a structure fire. Fire at Steve's Steakhouse. We stepped off the engine with four personnel, and we were able to, I was able to get off, go do my assessment of the building, get the guys to, hey, get, this is where it's at, and we had a four-man engine company that day, just out of sheer luck, and we were able to knock that down really quick. But, so getting on, getting the fire, getting to the fire quickly is our best defense. So some quick home hardening tips is getting the mesh not to exceed one-eighth of an inch. People need to clean out their gutters on the roofs of any leaves or debris, roofs need to be the fire-resistant material, and all of this has, we've already adopted the new building codes, so all new construction, John is very tough on all the new construction, fire-resistant. There are things coming out where all new construction, from zero to five feet of your home, you're to have nothing flammable. And then in two years, I believe, all existing homes, they don't want any live vegetation up against your house from zero to five feet, in a very high severe fire zone. The eaves, the decks, trees, I mean, we have decks here with trees in the middle of them, there's, there's just no, that's just the way, the way it is here. These are just some photos around town of, we were very lucky the day of the island fire not to get a spot fire ahead of it. If we would've gotten a spot fire from an ember, it would've been a totally different story. So, all these new concepts of the building is to be, kind of fireproof your house. There's, making sure where you put your patio furniture, there's all kinds of things that I'm hoping to put together to be able to, I got some pamphlets over here, but I wanna make them Avalon-specific. But like on this place right here, access to this place would be very, very tough. We'd hit it from the top on East Whitley, but we'd also be on Metropole, and we would have a, like 150-foot hose light up the hill to get to it, and then the guys up top would also, we'd, that would be, and then on this one, we show the vegetation under it, so there's grass under it, and the grass leaves underneath the decking, so if something gets into there, that's gonna be punking around for a while before we could even get to it. So, there's just a lot of little things like this one. If an ember gets in between the houses, there's openings on both sides, so the fire kinda punks around there, and then both houses are gonna go. The house on the right, there's leaves and trees right there up on the roof, but then underneath it, there's a lot of, you see green, but when you reach in, you go like that, you're always gonna pull out some dead stuff, and that's the stuff that's gonna catch fire. Some infrastructure things, this is an old picture, they did do some brush clearance, that's up behind Mount Ada. We were, we pushed very hard for them to clear that, 'cause if we get a fire on that side of town, all our internet infrastructure and phones are gonna go out. So, they cleared it last year, this year, we're gonna make them clear it a little bit more. Even the city, the city, that's an old picture, they cleared it, we sent the city some photos, they got rid of the tree and did some brush clearance up behind the city warehouse. Hamilton Cove, Hamilton Cove had some issues, and they were able to properly mitigate their wildland brush stuff. And then trees like this, all the dead palm fronds underneath are what the embers catch, and then the tree goes, and then the building next to it goes. These are some aerial views. Last year, I was lucky enough to go with LA County Fire in a helicopter and get some aerial shots of the town for brush clearance, and so you could see the brushes right up, not right up against, but really close to Hamilton. All the trees, the terraces, access on the terraces are tough, if we have to back out, it's not gonna be very easy, just some things for us to watch out for. And then also, Sol Vista, the other hillsides around town, and Zangray. So in the first week of May, I am going to, I got into a class at the National Fire Academy in Maryland, and in the class I'm taking is community risk reduction, things to, what, to be able to put together a paper. I've talked with Dave about it, about possibly having like a fire council, a fire safe council, talking about different issues, so we're all on the same page, Island Company Conservancy, what can we all do together to, there's grants out there that we could go after for some possible brush clearance grants, and like Community Woodchipper Day and stuff like that, that unfortunately, this year, we went after different grants, but there's a lot of other ones that we could try and go after for future things.
So we're not gonna be able to get out of this high fire-
We're not gonna be able to get out of it.
Because of the close proximity, the possibility of the, you know, right now they're green, but we, we know most of the time they're brown.
Yeah.
So, wind and blowing, and so we're kinda-
The potential, the potential's there on a normal day for it to be tough, but when we have, when we include the winds, they're just, they're calling them conflagrations now, it's just, it's burning down whole towns.
Right.
That, and they have everybody there with them. So for us, unfortunately, it's one of those that we cannot, I, we were, I was at, what could we, there's nothing, nothing that we could do except better the community and make it safer. And I, I hate, I'm a homeowner, too, I do not like that bill, but it's, I have to look past that, and it's just, it's where we live, we love it here, but we just need to try and make it a little bit safer.
So of course, they have the high rates, so they, when, if the fire does come, they're able to pay everybody off? This is what it is, right? They have enough money in their coff-
And they say this does not influence the insurance rates, but we all know.
Right?
Yeah.
Right? Well-
But we will get an official letter, I'll bring it back to you with some other things that we can go over, and then we just, we decide from there, we get 120 days after that letter.
Okay, great.
And then I have a, some, give me a call or come to my office, there's a whole bunch of info, too, if you wanna look up on it.
Thank you. Well, it's a good thing we authorized that federal grant thing, so maybe we can get some more staff.
Do we need to look at additional triggers within the planning code at a future date that would allow for, if there's a certain percentage of change, a requirement of changing materials in those projects? So if they're looking at changing the scope of the house that they're in, that it then triggers them to be required to use fire-
I believe all new construction will have, will be the, I believe it's-
Fire safety-
Chapter 7A, and, yeah.
So does new construction-
That's what I mean, yeah. If it needs to be remodeled, that actually triggers-
Oh, it does.
I believe the remodels are, are counted.
And we'll review that to make sure.
Let's make sure if we need to change that.
Absolutely.
Good, good information, though, thank you.
Thanks, chief.
In this case, so with that, I will adjourn the meeting?
Well, I think we have, no, no, 'cause now we're, now we'd like to move into the joint, the joint session.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
The council meeting will continue, and I think we'll, we have all the planning commission members here, so we'd ask them, I think, the joint council up here on the dais, are you looking to take a break, or you wanna go, move into the joint session?
Five minutes?
Five minutes?
Five minutes? Five minutes?
Five minutes? Okay, we'll take a five-minute break, then we'll come back and have the planning commission up here with council. Thank you.
No, this is a joint.
I got the motion of the city council and the planning commission.
I think we're ready to go, he gave me the sign.
Okay.
So I'm just going to open up the planning commission meeting as well, it's a joint meeting between council and planning commission, so we're open.
And then do we want to do roll call of planning commission since we already have council sitting here?
Vice Chairman Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Here.
Mr. Seg?
Here.
Mr. Robau?
Present.
Mr. Putnam?
Here.
Mr. Ruppin?
Here.
And I would just indicate for the record that Chairman Glass is here, sitting in the audience, because through conversations he's had with city attorney, he has a conflict of interest on the, the joint session discussion concerning short-term rentals, so he is an audience, but he is anticipating to participate from the podium as a resident.
Okay.
So folks, everybody, thank you all for getting here, that hopefully this, this works and makes sense. We, we've asked for this meeting, it kind of came on two fronts, both council and planning commission asked kind of to revisit what we have on the books for short-term rentals. So what we have done as staff, we do have a presentation for you tonight that we're going to present regarding the short-term rentals. We call it a saturation map, but really it's primarily of the flats, because when we get into the other areas, and Matt will break it down, as I think he's going to be addressing this, we'll make the presentation to you to show where we have all the current vacation rentals and then really leave it to you as the two bodies to discuss what direction you might want to give staff on this. Personally, I do believe, talking with staff, I think our major focus really has to be on enforcement of what we have on the books. I do think we have plenty of the tools at our disposal, but we have to do a better job of enforcing and maybe change how we fund some of this in order to get a part-time code enforcement, for example, on weekends and after hours in order to do this enforcement. And I think there's ways of doing this with the application process for these rental units, but you know, we'll go through this process and have questions of Matt as we go through if there's, there's anything regarding how we came about what you're about to see on the presentation that we can talk about it. Matt?
Good, good evening, council and planning commission. I have a quick presentation to go over, just kind of some of the stats or the key numbers for our CUP and transient rental license population, just kind of as an overview. Most of my conversation would be more driven by the, kind of the finance side of that, since that's kind of the part of the world I oversee, but does kind of touch a bit on the, the CUP and the planning issuance side as well. So just kind of as an overview, conditional use permits and transient rental licenses are issued at each rental unit. So for example, a duplex would have two separate CUPs or transient rental licenses From there, once a CUP or a TRL, if you will, has been issued, they're required to obtain a business license from the finance department. Per the municipal code, business licenses are issued based on the type of business and location, and so what I mean by that would be a duplex with two rental units on the same partial, parcel would just be issued one business license. Or similarly, a duplex with a one CUP and one year-round rental would have two separate business licenses. So this is really a long way to say, there isn't a one-to-one connection of CUPs issued and business licenses, and that's because the rules that kind of govern when a CUP is required and the rules of when a business license required don't necessarily mirror. So all CUPs would need a business license, but it's possible for two CUPs on the same parcel to have one business license cover those two CUPs. So an example would be like a duplex. Historically, in the granting of business license, there's been some discretion applied. So for example, we have some business license owners that have, say, two properties within Hamilton Cove. I think you can make the argument that two separate business licenses would apply, but some people have taken the, the two locations in the same complex as being primarily the same business at the same location. And so there are some individuals in town that have one business license with, say, two properties. Similarly, there, there is a business license where there's two adjacent or adjoining properties that have two separate CUPs, but one business license for the, the adjoining properties. So that's, that's really a long way to say, it's, it's difficult to do a one-to-one match, but that's what we attempted to do to make sure every CUP has a business license, but some of those business licenses may cover multiple CUPs. And then the last thing is, when we collect payments on the TOT, we don't necessarily receive business license specific information and how we enter it into our cash receipt system. And so that means if you wanted to say, business license one, two, three, four, how much TOT did they receive? It's, it's a manual process for us to do it. We do track it by the individual property, but it's not an automated process, so when someone turns in their payment and they might say 61 Sol Vista, the business license may be 61 Avalon Terrace, but the only way I'm going to match that business license, or that payment received for 61 Sol Vista to the business license for 61 Avalon Terrace is a manual matching process. You know, we have had some discussions on how we can improve upon the way we're currently doing it, but right now it is a, kind of a manual matching of the, the TOT received to what business license it applies for. So planning provided me with a list of CUPs and transient rental licenses. There were 378 CUPs and 33 transient rental licenses for a total population of 411. Included in that population, there were 28 properties that I identified that did not have a current business license for 2023. Again, the business licenses are tied to the, the calendar year. The majority of those 28 previously had business licenses, but had them closed within the last five years. And I did review, we do have a tool within finance that allows us to look at rental activity on the major websites, so Airbnb, VRBO, booking.com. And for those 28 properties that didn't have a business license, there wasn't any current activity identified for those properties. Included in the, the 411 also were five properties that I associated with T, or with hotels. So for example, we have a couple hotels in town that have rental homes adjacent to or next to, and in some of those cases, those adjoining rental properties don't have their own separate business license, they've been kind of historically grouped with the hotel's business license. Again, how the municipal code works for the business license, it's a different business at a different location, and the interpretation was, when that, that license was issued, was that that rental property is primarily the same business and the adjoining parcel is more or less the same location. And so that's why we do have some instances where adjoining parcels share a business license.
Would that be like the Ramos Hotel?
Possibly, a, a, a different one came to mind, but there, there are, there's more than one where that situation has occurred. And lastly, there's also some, what we call banked properties, so CUPs do have the ability to, and again, planning can probably speak to this better than I can, but to maintain the rights of a CUP without actively renting in a short-term rental if they're using it for a year-round rental purpose. So the latest list I, I was provided did have 15 properties that were, had a CUP, weren't actively renting, but they, they were noted as year-round rentals. So really for kind of the purpose of the analysis, especially when we get into the, kind of some of the mapping and the density discussion, I really used kind of the finance data, the business license data as kind of the, the driver of, of kind of the information that's going to be presented. So currently, we have 358 short-term rental properties with current business licenses for 2023. When I say current, we do have some that haven't paid as of March, but if they had paid in '22 and are reporting payments, I've included them as kind of the active current population. So typically, if somebody hasn't paid a business license for more than a year, I'll go in and we'll close down the business license and require the owner to reapply. But if, for those properties, we will be following up with, but if they haven't paid by March, we wouldn't necessarily close the account or close the license. Again, as I mentioned earlier, TOT payments were manually matched. How we collect the money currently isn't necessarily tied to the business license number, and so kind of with this matching process, I was able to tie 2.65 million or approximately 96% of the TOT collected from short-term rentals to a particular business license. So that remaining 4% could either apply to businesses that have subsequently closed at some point in 2022, as well as there are a few active rentals without current licenses, and some of those are because they share that business license. So if I, if I have two properties within Hamilton Cove, I do have an owner with one license with two properties in Hamilton Cove, I would just let, I use the primary property, the one the license is under for the matching purpose. And again, and sometimes we'll get a TOT payment and it'll, the record I'll have is a TOT John Smith, and I didn't necessarily go to the PDF or the paper copy to try to figure out what payment that was, I just had the, kind of the cash receipt that just says the, the individual's name. We try and finance when we do receive TOT to give some indication of what property it's associated with, but we do have some where it's, it's difficult in this matching process. But as you can see, 96% of the TOT received I've matched to a license, and that's kind of what's going to drive the, the analysis. We did have 77 properties with current business licenses that did not have any rental activity in 2022. The majority of those have been paying though for the business license itself, only 13 of those 77 had not paid for their license as of March 14th. And nine of those did have rental activity identified when I did a review of our compliance website, so we will be following up with those property owners to make sure we receive payment, but I wanted to provide that information. So here is a breakdown of vacation rentals by location. So I've grouped vacation rentals in, in the following categories, the flats, and that's anywhere between Sumner and Clemente. It'll be easier to say the terraces first, because the terraces are going to be Canyon Terrace, Sol Vista, lower, middle and upper terrace, as well as Pedley Beach Road. The hills is kind of anything in core town that doesn't fall under the flats or the terraces. Generally, it's in the Whitley, Marilla neighborhood of town, but there are some kind of one-offs, if you will, for example, the casino has a CUP for transient rental. I grouped it with the hills, just for finding a place to group it. And then the, the two complexes that we have separate are Bahia Vista and Hamilton Cove. And so the first column is the number of licensed rentals, so that's a current business license for 2023. And then the second column are the number within those categories that did not have any rental activity identified during calendar year 2022. So you can see, Hamilton Cove makes up 35% of the business license, vacation rentals by location, the flats make up 34%, and the remaining areas make up the other third. So that's, that's probably the easiest way to think of the breakdown, would be a third Hamilton Cove, a third the flats, and a third every, everywhere else. What I did then is looked at the number of months of rent, active rental activity, as well as the TOT revenue collected by those locations. And so the average ones, I have two columns for, one is if you include the properties that had zero activity reported for the year. And so for example, in the flats, if you include every current license holder, on average, they had rental activity for six months out of the year in the flats. But if you exclude those properties that had zero activity, so of the ones that are truly actively renting, the average one was active or rented for eight months out of the year. So that's how you would read those two columns. So you can see, Hamilton Cove and the terraces, once you factor out the, the non-active ones are the ones that had the most, of the actively renting ones, the ones that rented the most months per year. The TOT revenue, so that's the revenue collected by the city, again, this is just the ones we were able to match. There is about 100,000 not included in that figure, but of the, the 2.65 million, you can see 47% comes from Hamilton Cove, the other half from the other properties. So while Hamilton Cove is 135% of the population of rentals, from a revenue standpoint, it's 47%. You can see in the, the last two columns on the table, the average TOT per rental, the first one is if you even include the ones that reported zero activity, and then the, the one on the furthest right is if you exclude the ones that haven't reported any activity, just the ones that have reported some activity, what the average TOT per location is. So you can see for the, the totals, the average, if you factor in the inactive ones, the average licensed transient rental operates seven months out of the year, but if you kind of take out those 77 that weren't renting at all, of the ones that are renting, the average is nine months out of the year. So again, another way to look at that, if you look at the 358 we're looking at, 77, so the column furthest to the left shows the number that had zero months of active rentals. So you can see, ones that reported only one month of activity, there are only 20 out of the 350 that fall into that category. I know there's a lot of discussion of rental activities that maybe report once a year and $12, or rent one night for $100 and that's it. While we do have some reporters of that, there, there's very few relative to the, the population of the whole, as a whole. As you can see, as you go up, activity for 10, 11 or 12 months, if you kind of take the outliers of the zero months of activity of the ones that are actively renting, two-thirds of them rent at least 10 months out of the year. And this is a breakdown of annual TOT by active rentals, so this is excluding the ones that reported nothing or had $0 matched to the property. Less than 20 reported less than $100 total for the year of TOT payments. So this is all based on TOT received, not the, the rental income. But you can see the majority of properties, approximately 90 of them, reported somewhere for the year between 5 and 9, 10,000 in TOT to the city, and so that would be between 40 and 80,000 in gross receipts for those properties. And then you can see, if you go down to the end, properties that report 20,000 or more, we have, I think, 19 that were in that kind of high-end range, if you will. And the average of the ones with active rental, reported TOT of 9,449. So the next few slides are going to kind of break down the, the saturation mapping, if you will. Again, to build this map, I used data from the business license database, as well as the, the parcel assessment database, so kind of all finance data, if you will. What I've done is kind of shaded, again, the, the regions of town that make up, in the, in the very top, that's where Hamilton Cove, the, kind of the yellow shading, that is what I consider the hills. The red would be the flats, the darker red within there would be Bahia Vista, and then the blue, blue-green color would be the terraces. So within the flats, what the table shows is kind of a breakdown by street. The STR is based on the current business license, and the residential parcel is based on kind of my direct assessment database. So if there is a parcel that is a duplex, I only would count that as one in the residential parcel, and the reason I chose to do it that way is because if we have a duplex that is renting both units and they're owned by the same owner, they would only have one business license. And so I, I tried to make the, kind of the same treatment of, say, a duplex apply for both. So if you can see in Clemente, and it looks like I should have an asterisk there when I shouldn't, the, the asterisk is for Beacon, and that's between Sumner and Clemente, so again, we do have a couple of Beacon properties that I consider to be part of the flats, and we also had some Beacon properties that I considered to be part of the hills. But you can see there are nine current business licenses on Clemente for short-term rentals compared to the thirty-one residential parcels on Clemente. And kind of going down the list, Clarissa has thirty-six of its ninety as currently licensed for transient rental. Eucalyptus had the highest, as of the term of percentage, forty-four percent of the parcels within Eucalyptus approximately are currently licensed short-term rentals. So what I did there is I took a screenshot of kind of the map of the city and placed dots on where we have licensed activity. The dark dots represent licensed activity where there's active rentals reported in two thousand and twenty-two. And the lighter blues are ones that have a current business license but didn't report any activity. We did go through the list again of the ones that had active and didn't report activity. And we did find nine that we're going to be following up with that potentially were renting. But the vast majority of the ones that were inactive, we didn't find any evidence that they were truly actively renting during twenty-two. So the next slide is a breakdown of the hills. Again, we have Whitley, Marilla, Beacon, the portion of Beacon that I didn't consider would be the flats, Maiden Lane, Crescent, Hiawatha, Metropole, and Other. Those six were on streets that only had one rental, short-term rental license on it. So for example, there is one on Olive. So you can see, other than Maiden, which has a small number of parcels as a whole, there's generally less concentration within the streets in the hills than were in the flats. And then similarly with the terraces, it's a breakdown Avalon Canyon, Lower, Middle, and Upper, as well as Pedley Beach Road. I think Dave's going to be passing around copies of the slide deck, so I apologize for not printing those out. Totally, totally understand that. I apologize for that. And I didn't go to the same level of detail with some of the complexes. But you can see in Bahia Vista, there were thirty-nine current licenses out of the sixty-five parcels that I have on the parcel map data. And similarly, in Hamilton Cove, the hundred eighty-seven residential parcels, I have a hundred and twenty-six with a current short-term rental license. I do know there are a few properties within Hamilton Cove that are operating under a shared business license, if you will. But again, for the purpose of this, I based it on the current business license address or the address associated with the current business license. And so with that, that kind of concludes the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions on kind of how I came up with this data or just our process in general for monitoring vacation rentals in town for compliance.
One of the things that seems glaring to me, not glaring, but and I don't know how we do that or if we even want to do that, is that we make every unit have a business license.
And in some ways, that would make things simpler for me. Again, when we're determining whether or not to issue a business license, I go to the municipal code, kind of how it's written, I understand how we have, say, a duplex would have two CUPs, yet one business license. But I'm sure we can maybe have a different interpretation of the municipal code than the one that kind of historically we've taken, or if needed, we could potentially look to cleaning up that language.
I would be in favor of revising that, especially if we're going to be doing, if we're talking about maybe having to provide another half-time code enforcement person, we're doing that because you could have that many can help with paying for that kind of thing, it would be nice and we could get a better deal.
I agree.
And it would make things simple. It's difficult from finances perspective, you know, to match when there's kind of room for judgment, if you will. And, you know, we do have some that have been faithfully reporting for years, multiple properties, but still operating only with the one license. And so it does make it more difficult for us to do kind of that one-to-one matching, if you will.
And how much is a business license?
Fifty-three, fifty.
Oh, my goodness.
I was, I was under the impression that every vacation application, CUP or license that came in front of us, when there was two, a duplex, I think we, the last one that I remember was on the terrace. And each, it was a duplex property, and there was two that came, two units in that duplex came in front of us. We viewed each individual property as an application. So each address was a different application. So I was always under the impression that every application had to have a permit, a license.
We do have some duplexes that have two separate licenses for each half of the duplex. But we also have some that, you know, have been licensed for years and renewed every year where it's a situation like I discussed where they have two. And how the code is written, you can have a short-term rental business license that applies to two duplexes within the business license.
I know, and I'm saying that I'd like to see maybe that looked at and revised.
If I could, Mayor, what the license says is under a business license, which is separate from the transient occupancy license. But the business license says, "A separate license shall be obtained for each branch establishment or location of the business transaction, and carried on and for each separate type of business at the same location." So if you have two businesses at one location, you need two business licenses. If you have two locations, I would interpret this as saying that you need to have a separate business license for each location.
And I think that's a fair interpretation. I think challenges historically, people have viewed the two units as, say, in a duplex as being primarily in the same location, considering they maybe share a parcel number, they share the same owner, they share the same principal business occurring in the location. And so I think that's why some of those situations have occurred where they're principally doing the same business. Similar with adjoining parcels where they're transiently renting by the same owner or by the same, you know, operator-owner. And so I think it's, in some of the times, it's been interpreted as the same business occurring in the same location because there is one parcel for both those units.
And we can easily clarify that. That's a very, very simple amendment to the business license code.
And we know which properties fall under that category. And there's, I would say maybe thirty, just off the top of my head, that a situation like that would apply. Where there's, and by properties, there's probably nineteen licenses that have more than one CUP associated with it. So it's not a huge population that fall into that. It just makes the one-to-one matching challenging.
Well, great. That sounds like an easy fix.
Do we have any data on how many people own multiple licenses that are strictly short-term rentals?
Yes, yes and no. And so there are sixteen, if you go by the owner name within the business license database, there are sixteen owners that own multiple properties. The challenge is, and why there's likely more than that, is if they're operating under an LLC or if they're, you know, say, one of them, the owner's name is Matt Baker and the other is Matt and Julia Baker. I didn't go to the level of trying to determine duplicates like that, if you will. But if you're looking for Matthew Baker as the owner on two same properties, there were sixteen that I identified where the owner name was an exact match for another property. So there may be more than that sixteen, but that's, I guess, all I could say definitively. We also have some properties where they'll be under a trust name, and so there may be some shared ownership. But because of how it's structured, it appears as different owners or it is different owners in the business license.
But so Matt, so if, let's say I have five transient rentals, am I just sending you one check for all of them? Or do you know how much you're getting off of each of those properties?
You would get one check, but you'd still be required to report separately. So if you own two properties, I might get one check, but I should have two statements breaking down how much was associated for property A, how much was associated for property B. And I'd say that is, there's maybe with the duplexes, there might be some that are reporting them together. But in situations where I discussed, say, a Hamilton Cove, and there are multiple, same owner owning multiple properties, they do provide separate forms for each one, so that it really wouldn't be too much work to figure out that split.
And the new forms are wonderful.
And one of the things we're looking to improve on that, because one of the challenges we have is, you know, consistency in naming, whether it's, you know, Clarissa, Clarissa, or if you're at Soul Vista, or Avalon Terrace, or Canyon Terrace. And so one of the things we're looking to do and improve on is, you know, rather than have the field where you put the name and the address every time, you would put your business license number in, and that would populate your contact information. And the advantage to me is that I would at least have the matching done for me. Whereas now I get a check that says sixty-one Soul Vista, and I got to find the business license. And that might be sixty-one Avalon Canyon or Terrace or... And so that is one area where our new systems potentially can be able to help. We're working with our developer on those updates. They're a little more complicated than just adding a field. But that is something that I would like to see, and we are working towards implementing, which would make that ninety-six percent matching hopefully into a hundred percent matching for kind of reporting out purposes.
My question was going to actually be that with regard to automation. So one, splitting the business licenses, two, automating it by permit, three, having the address match with the county assessor, which is what everything should be anyway. And I feel like also runs confusion with both census and election issues as well, of people thinking they live at a certain address and they actually live at a different address. So I don't know if that's a bigger project to address one day if we can. The next part of that question then rolls into, if they don't have a business license and they are not operating, doesn't that trigger the loss of a permit or at least the review of the loss of a permit for non-use?
It would and should, and kind of how I've kind of approached it in my time is I've tried to go after what I considered the, I don't want to say the worst offenders, but the ones that we had kind of the less record of. And so last year, if you recall, we did bring some forth to counsel for revocation. And kind of who we targeted there were ones that did not, they had a CUP but did not have a business license and had not paid TOT. So we really tried to target the ones that were completely off finances radar, if you will. And, but yes, if they have a business license but haven't been actively renting, you know, we do have the ability to start the process to pull some of those.
I think it makes sense to review them if we can. I don't mean, it necessarily means they're going to be revocated, or maybe there's a period of time where they need to become active and compliant again to be able to continue, but just something to think about. Additionally, I agree that we should be looking at the hotels with conditional use permits and additional locations, having those be separated as well. I think that if you're looking at additional staffing, one, some of these will save staff time, which is great, so they can be utilized for enforcement. But two, looking at either increasing the cost of the business license specifically for CUPs, if we need to go that route, or at least enforcing those who have CUPs to pay those business licenses. But that amount alone, I'm not trying to pencil out the number versus the cost, wouldn't necessarily cover an additional enforcement person. So are there some revenue generating ideas that you have on how to go about doing that?
We do need to talk about the transient rental license and the pricing structure associated with that. So again, my recollection or the intent, of the intent behind the TRL is that there'd be an annual renewal and there would be an annual renewal fee associated with that. The challenge is that fee needs to be based on the costs we actually experience. And so this is a project that I was working on with Palmer, Michael Palmer, while he was here. I know he's been gone for a year now. But one of the avenues or mechanisms, I think, likely for that would be the annual renewal of the transient rental license. So the CUP has a large kind of upfront cost, but one to pay it, the business license piece is fairly nominal. And that's driven by the Muni Code and the, I believe, the forty-one dollars is the admin fee, and so that's finances time for processing it. But the portion specific to the rental license is only twelve fifty. But I believe that's considered to be a tax, and so I'm not sure if changing that is something that can be done without voter involvement. But the transient rental license was set up to have an annual renewal fee. And so that would probably be the mechanism, and then establishing what is captured by that fee.
We don't have a fee right now, is what you're saying?
We have, we have the initial thirty thousand dollar application fee like it was before the CUP, but we don't have a separate annual TRL renewal fee, separate from the business license itself, the fifty-three.
Well, how much is a regular business license for like weddings by the sea?
Most licenses are a hundred and thirty-four, seventy-five.
I mean, God, that's a start.
This one's fifty-eight?
Fifty-three, fifty.
And the TRL is thirty thousand?
Well, the initial application for the transient rental license is about three thousand. And there's pieces involved with noticing for planning and SEQA. And there's components at how we came up with that three thousand. I think the goal or the intent of Planning Commission was potentially to maybe have that upfront cost lower. And I don't want to speak for counsel, but I was sitting in the AV room for some of those meetings, was to maybe not have as high of an upfront fee, but have an annual fee that creates some financial incentive for someone who's not actively to use it to not pay the annual fee.
On that thought, I think we went to the transient, the license, because there was a lot of concern about the CUPs going with the land and creating the higher price in real estate. So I think with this license, people who are coming to apply now, there's no incentive other than actually wanting to have a business and renting their units because it's not, there's nothing other than the license, creating a business to have a transient rental business to actually make money and pay the TOT. So it's not like they're coming to get the license and paying, it's thirty-eight hundred dollars to get the application. It's when they, they're not going to be able to sell that license, is what I'm saying, so.
But that's two down the line, though. It's not the first sale, it's the second sale.
But I think also, too, I think keeping it at that rate as a CUP is good because they have to come in front of us, even though it is a license. And I think that's why we haven't really decided upon a fee yet, because we're just, this is new and how, you know.
If I could just note, the license fee is the same as the original CUP fee because the cost to the city of doing the, all the work, the noticing, sending out notices, the SEQA work, some minor attorney fees for each one, all that cost and staff time and processing and setting it up and getting the conditions, that was the three thousand one hundred bucks. That fee applies now to license, to anyone that comes in for a license. So if you're just renewing it or you're transferring it to someone that you already, you have a CUP and you're selling it, it's a minor transfer fee, you don't pay that three thousand. But anyone coming in to getting a license now, as Yoli said, if they're coming in now, they're only doing it to make money or to help offset their mortgage. And that's why the fee, there's not been a rush to lower that fee because people are just doing this for business purposes or to help them make the mortgage.
Annie, to answer what you just said, that the license that they get now, moving forward, that we've been approving or denying, that license doesn't go with the sale. What goes with the sale the one time is the one that has a CUP. So say I have a property right now, if I were, and it has a CUP on it, if I sell it to you tomorrow, you'll get that permit.
For you?
For, no, until you sell it again.
Until I sell it, okay.
But if you sell it again, you don't get to sell that permit.
Okay.
So the licenses coming forth now in front of us don't go with the property at all, not even once. So I think that's what I was trying to say was that anybody coming is not coming for, like, to get their... for, like, to get their property value to the property, it's, it's purely chill.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
There might still be a little.
But we need to get a fee for the transient rental license, 'cause we, didn't we approve this in twenty twenty-one? So, now we have two years of people not renewing or not paying a yearly transient rental fee, right?
Uh, other than the, the business license that a CUP would pay the fifty-three fifty a year, they would be paying that. But there would be, and, there, there hasn't been an additional, that I'm aware of, an additional fee assessed to them.
And Scott, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
If, if we do the research and make a determination from an enforcement standpoint, can we then increase the annual fee to capture those enforcement costs?
Yes, you could do that. So, you, you, you come up with a cost estimate as to how much you would spend to enforce it, and if you recall, the, the violations would be perhaps, you know, code enforcement at night, or, or, or on the weekends. You include that cost structure in the annual fee, and then you spread it out among, um, all the, uh, the license fees. And so you can enact a fee for that. You could also enact, um, another fee under the Mitigation Fee Act, um, if there are other, uh, purposes you want to have that money, um, go to that are tied to transient rentals. So, you have several avenues if you wanted to adopt fees, um, to deal with, one, the impact of transient rentals, or, two, the cost to give the city a fund, the cost, to, to actually have people go out and enforce it.
I have a question about law enforcement, 'cause we have a huge law enforcement contract, and they're called out on some of those. Couldn't that be to offset, help us offset some of that contract with the county?
Well, the issue is, that would be enforcing violations of the law, that'd be different from viol, enforcing violations of a conditional use permit. So, we, there'd have to be a criminal violation that the sheriff would go out on, but violations of just a, you know, one of the conditions of approval, um, that would be the city's cost.
Well, so then my question is, um, how would we use code? So, what is code's responsibility when they get a call, or what are they getting calls on?
If, if I could, there's a couple of things we can do that we're looking at doing with that enforcement out of it. 'Cause that's, that's the other thing, is what we have currently on the books from an enforcement standpoint, we have a complaint form now online that you can, from your phone or computer, uh, file a complaint with the city, uh, in, in real time as these complaints come in or they're recognized. Um, we're also looking at, uh, maybe updating that system, so we can recognize and have a better tracking system for those complaints. So, when they come in, first thing, you know, whether we have a notification system on the weekend, or first thing Monday morning, we're following up, identifying them, and then following up with the property owner. Um, and, and what we need to do, in my opinion, is then, uh, establish a protocol that, whether it's a three strikes and you're out policy, or however we're gonna document, you know, maybe you put priority on noise ordinances, or alcohol, or after hours, or whatever it's going to be, trash, and you put all these things into categories, and we document them. So, when, a, as, as Councilman Member Lavelle mentioned, you know, bring these up on an annual basis, and that's our goal with the Planning Commission. This year was the first year we ever brought any up for revocation. And as Matt said, we did, we picked the low-hanging fruit. But as we move forward, we're gonna start picking some that have had violations, and bring them to Planning Commission, and make a determination, and give them their due process of whether or not those violations rise to the level of having their permit revoked. I think some will, and some you might decide won't, but at least we'll have that process. The property owner can come in and defend it. Um, but we have to have a way of following up on those complaints, because when they happen Friday night at midnight, um, nobody is here.
Well, I have always said from day one, it's, it's about enforcement, because we do have, uh, I, I believe, three, three offenses, and they will come up in front of us for a, a hearing for possible revocation. Now, if we do have, so we do have that already on, in the municipal code. However, we say that there has to be formal complaints. So, I'm not sure, and, and people aren't complaining formally, but now that we have the new website, hopefully it is helpful and more, um, easy for people to, to go ahead and do that at that time, you know, because it's after hours a lot of times, and, and nobody, you know, I know vacation rental companies, they do have twenty-four hour, they're supposed to have twenty-four hour, um, uh, someone on call at night.
Right.
And there are, uh, a few, uh, vacation rental companies here that are, are, are actively doing that. Um, and, once we start enforcing these things, um, maybe people who have these permits will take it seriously. And I know when I was in Bullhead City, and we did a vacation rental, you couldn't have so many people past six PM, then past ten, and they had cameras. Let me tell you, when we walked in and we had visitors that were staying down the road come in, we got a phone call. It was crazy. It was kind of a little creepy, actually. But, uh, anyways, but maybe because their city is so strict on pulling permits if they're not complying, and what they're within a community that, you know, has a lot of, um, issues. But maybe there needs to be more, um, security around, and with the enforcement, and losing permits, that things will start changing, for the better.
And I would say that the complaints that we have fielded last year, I mean, if we have four hundred of these in the city, it's the same ones that are generally generating the complaints. It's a small handful of them that are generating the ninety percent of the complaints we get.
I, 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 I completely understand that a hundred percent. And I know that a lot of people are, you know, saying that the saturation at Hamilton and the saturation, you know, and the Vista, or, I mean, it's a huge, and I'm not here to say I'm for vacation rentals, or I'm against vacation rentals. I'm just saying that there's an application process. Um, the city council's the one who creates the municipal code. We follow the application process, and there has to be some sort of, uh, like you said, enforcement. And if we can hopefully get that to, you know, figure that out, then things will start getting better in our community with the quality of life and, and, um, and all the, the rentals and hotels, because not only do vacation rentals cause loud issues, hotels do too, you know, um, so.
So, back, back to the noise complaints. I believe, I know, and I believe you have said it before, sometimes that, um, 'cause you've got some rentals, that sometimes you're a little nurse, and you call law enforcement, correct? I'm looking at you, Sandy Putnam.
No, yes. Well, yeah, if you've got something great, you call the sheriff.
Right. See, so that's the other thing, and that could be because of noise. And so then again, it gets back to my point. I don't know if it just stops at law enforcement. Law enforcement, do they give us a record of how many of those things they go onto rentals? Because then again, that could maybe justify paying part of their, helping make part of their thing, 'cause they are called out on instances.
Right. And, and I, I believe that that's very important from our standpoint, because while law enforcement might be called, they might, they might not go out there and issue a citation, or disorder, or any charges, but at least they have a record of it, and we as a city can follow up and get verification, because we can take action on that as it relates to the permit.
And I don't think that is passed on to us yet. Unless when they make their general comments, that's included in there, but we, maybe it should be broken down.
And, and I've had conversations with them, and I, I'm very confident that they'll be able to do that, and they'll pass that on.
In the emails that we receive, uh, from, you know, neighbors complaining, it usually states that they do call the police. So, from there, could we ask them to check if they did get that call? Because from the, it seems to be a certain house that's always getting the calls.
That you could do that. I know that people have done that, you know. If the sheriff is out there because of whatever, but they do keep, from what I know, they do keep records of that.
They, they do, and the advantage for us is that it's an independent person rather than the neighbor. 'Cause what we'll hear from the owner is, oh, that person always complains, they don't want us to do anything, if the TV's on, they're complaining. Well, if the sheriff goes out and says, "It was loud, we heard it as we approached the street, we told them to quiet down, there was fifteen people on the patio," at least we have an independent verification, we can act on it.
Do we know if code checks the placard that's supposed to be in the window, to make sure that the numbers are correct? Um, because the other day I was walking by a vacation rental, you can't read anybody's number other than, if you wanna book this, um, this is where to book. But there's no, the, the emergency number part of it, everything is covered up.
Right.
There is, there is a permit in the window, but the emergency number is covered up.
And, and I think that that's a valuable tool to have in the flats, for example, because you're right there on the sidewalk, you can look at the window, you can get the number, and it should be accurate. When you get into other areas, such a, you know, for Hamilton Cove, for example, to go in, you might have to go up a hundred and fifty steps to locate whatever window to look at, as compared to, we have a list, and, you know, I've worked with Hamilton Cove HOA to provide us an accurate list, where we can just look it up right there, uh, in a system, rather than going physically to the window. I think it makes sense for the flats and certain areas, but it doesn't make sense across the board.
Right. No, I just, I was just.
And I agree.
Wonder if we, if we have that.
Just to, to add to that, I have had complaints come to finance, and I have sent code out to check on a particular property, and when they came back and verified, we did reach out to that property owner to correct it. So, um, you know, not that I'm asking you to narc on your neighbors, but when we do get information, we do use code to follow up. Um, and we took action, reached out to the owner, and they had to sign up by the end of the day. Um, so that, we, we do use code when, when we're aware of a, a violation.
And we've also found situations where the number that they've listed as a manage, on-island managing partner is the, uh, housekeeper, that they just put the same number, they have no idea they're even being used as that person. And so, that can't happen. We need to clean up that language, that it can't, you know, it has to be somebody that's in that business.
Do you think that, that is another thing that I, I kinda had a little bit of an issue with as well? Um, like, if somebody is managing the property, I mean, I would encourage to use a company, a vacation company. I mean, not always do people do that, but a lot of times they just have their cousin, or, you know, their brother, or their sister, but it's not, to me, with a situation like that, it should be a, a legitimate company or the owner. Do you know what I'm saying?
I do. Can I ask Matt? Matt, do we require management, those management individuals to pull a business license?
No.
And that's another issue that I was gonna bring up too, because if somebody has their phone number on a twenty-four hour vacation rental place, saying they're the ones that are responsible twenty-four hours a day, they should also be required to have a business license, 'cause they're, I'm sure, collecting money as well.
And, and a lot of, sorry, sorry to interrupt. A, a lot of them are, that we've seen kind of come across are cleaning services, but even if they have a license for the cleaning service, they, you, you can make the argument that it is a separate distinct business, um, which would require a separate license. Uh, I think then it'll just be working with planning to identify, uh, that list, and see which ones have a property management license, if you will, on island.
Could we put a space on their form when they're gonna pay their TOTS of that, if they're the ones that we're contacting, or who we're supposed to contact that's managing the property?
Well, usually the, the homeowner, I, I think a lot of times the, the homeowners say managing the, the rental activity, but a lot of the homeowners don't necessarily live on the island year-round. Uh, and so they, they would be the ones, and a lot of times, that if they submit a TOT form, it's not the cleaning services, and it's not the twenty-four hour emergency contact necessarily.
But could we do that, so we know who to refer back to?
We, we have that information because it's part of, well, we should have that information 'cause it's part of the transient rental license or CUP application. However, there are some that may have changed their rental management from when they first pulled. Um, so it, it's something we probably should look into updating, or making sure that we have accurate or updated information.
You yearly update the annual, yeah.
We, we can, we can include that as a, you know, 'cause we identify the business license for a transient rental ownership, right? So, we, if we do that, we can then identify, make that as a line that has to be filled out.
I think also, just, um, going back to that, the conversation regarding a formal complaint, um, I do actually think, even though I know there are some neighbors who may be very anti the idea of vacation rentals, um, that those complaints do be taken as part of the formal complaint process. Um, only in that if they're doing a complaint, we'll get emails, you guys get emails, city staff gets emails. I think having those as a category, but needing, uh, correlation with formal complaint to either the managing company or entity or person, and/or law enforcement, would trigger that as a formal complaint. So, just defining those and having a clear definition of the best route to go through to be able to do that. Um, the, um, question regarding staffing and who's responding, the one item that does say is that they are required to physically respond to the unit should there be a complaint call. And the number of people who are individuals that manage properties that do not respond to those locations physically, either because they're not here on the island occasionally, or because they don't feel safe to do so, which I totally understand, needs to be addressed. And I think we need to look at that portion of it, in terms of safety and ensuring that we want someone who's able to respond, but we also don't wanna put someone in harm's way if people are acting a certain way, which we've seen more and more of unfortunately recently. Um, so having the ability to have that communication between law enforcement and those entities, I think is key. Um, and maybe even doing some kind of training with everyone to make sure everyone's on the same page of what the best steps are, um, would be beneficial.
So, we, we tackled some good stuff so far, and I don't know how long this meeting to go, if we were saying it's gonna be an hour or so, 'cause you all have your other meeting. One of the things that was brought up in, in this, and I don't know if this is the day we wanna talk about it, or just say, okay, so we're, you're gonna deal with enforcement, we're gonna deal with this other stuff that we discussed, um, and you provided all of this great information on saturation, but are we wanting to even deal with that?
Saturation?
Yes.
Huh?
I don't know. He gave us all this information about percentages on streets and that kind of thing. And I know, you know, maybe it comes up at Hamilton Cove, we know they got sixty, whatever their percentage is. Um, and, but, I don't care either way.
I think we should have a joint meeting, specifically on the saturation. 'Cause I, I believe we'll be here for hours talking about it.
Right, 'cause, right, you have two different issues, right? Enforcing and regulating what we currently have out there.
Yes.
And then dealing with what we don't have out there yet. You know, are we, are we going to put a cap on it? Is there a saturation point? I know it is a point of consideration from Planning Commission when they come before Planning Commission. Uh, that is, that is one of the areas that they can consider of not granting. Um, and they do inquire about that, and I, I think Planning Commission is in tune with, um, how many are out there on certain streets and certain areas. But I do think there is a point, right, where there, there is a tipping point with these.
Well, and, this number is not accurate because of the multiple ones. You know, until we know all those multiple ones that are only doing, dealing with one business license, or like the, the, right?
I mean, we, we, we know the total number because that's the CUP number, so that's that four.
Eleven.
Eleven. Um, so how we get from the four eleven to the three fifty-eight is a, a combination of either the adjacent parcels, the, the duplexes.
So, the four eleven is, is.
And then the, there were some that had a CUP, but don't have a, a current business license.
Right.
And they're the ones that had a license likely last time I did this assessment, their license has subsequently been closed.
So, the four eleven does include the duplicates?
Yeah. So, we, we do have, that, that's the, the total universe, just kind of for the purpose of the saturation mapping. I, I based everything off the business license of who has a current open business license with finance.
Okay.
Do we have a, a, a number of, or a percentage of how many, um, just, uh, vacation rentals compared to full-time rent, uh, homes? What is?
So, I, I could provide, I don't have the number on hand. Um, I, I think that, so we do have the total number of residential parcels.
Well, not just, but I'm, my thing is domiciles. So, how many living units are there in the city of Avalon compared to?
We, we, I, I don't know that number offhand, but I can, um, pull that information. I think one of the more challenging ones is if you wanna know the number of year-round rentals. I don't believe every year-round rental on the island currently has a business for a year-round rental, uh, just given the, the number of current licensed year-round rentals I have. Um, so I, I could tell you the total number of, the, the population of units, uh, no problem. I can tell you the number of licensed year-round rentals, uh, but I suspect we have more year-round rentals than we have licensed year-round rentals. Uh, but if you, in theory, took the, the total population. But if you, in theory, took the total population, you subtracted out the CUPs or transients, you subtracted out the licensed year-round rentals, what you'd be left with would be the owner, in theory, the owner occupied and whether they're year-round or not.
Or the owner not occupied.
Or they could be owned but not occupied, yeah.
We get that number as far as the, the number of resident, are you looking for the percentage that are short-term rentals?
Yeah.
I don't know that number offhand, but we can pretty easily get that.
Okay, so then when we do the more than one permit, because if Thermosa has 10 units there, that's only one, but really we have 10 additional units because they're only paying for one business license.
Again, I'd have to look at how their license, I don't want to speak to a particular one, but I'd have to look at, so a hotel would have one license for each, for the hotel and then the cost of that license is tied to the number of rooms associated.
Right.
So likely with those properties we're discussing, they're likely factored into what they're paying as far as a business license. It's just not a separate license number and a separate ad fee associated with it. Likely those units are being captured in the total number of units in the license, if you will.
Places like that do have a number of resident domiciles, as you say, in there which aren't included in these numbers.
And they may, right, they aren't included in there, but they may have year-round rentals for some of, if they are renting it for housing.
In terms of enforcement, I did have a couple of questions regarding how people are booking vacation rentals. Some cities and/or countries are looking at being required to have a site that allows for tracking to be reported to the city or the entity that's collecting transient occupancy tax. I'm wondering if that's something that we want to look at. So for instance, to be able to do that, there may or may not be a fee associated with it, but they would be required to provide reporting of those entities, number of nights available for the entity to be rented versus number of nights that are actually rented. And that there are certain websites that can or cannot do that. And, I'm specifically looking at you, so I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I don't know if that's something that would feel possible, an issue, probable to be able to actually provide information like that to the city, like based off the Hamilton Cove website.
The.
On my website, it doesn't, I mean, it calls for a single available.
Okay.
And.
Like looking at like VRBO and Airbnb and those, those sites that have that, a lot of cities are starting to require that of them, so they understand what the full scope of that use is.
And there, so we do have a vendor and we currently really only use them for the monitoring, but there's a lot of different features. If we kind of want a different route as far as collection, so, for example, with host compliance, there is a way where you can require payments to be received through the website. Kind of the advantage of that is then they can do a comparison of the estimated rental activity based on the average room rates and the number of nights blocked off versus what's being reported. And kind of, so, you know, when I'm looking at properties, really, I've been kind of looking at, you know, what I would consider the more egregious, which is not reporting anything. But there are tools that could be utilized for collections that would allow for more of a comparison of how many nights are you reporting rented versus how much are you reporting rented on your Airbnb or VRBO website? So there are, there are tools out there that can do that. Kind of the step one to even be able to utilize them and I think that's why we kind of haven't fully gotten off the ground is just having quality data to go in initially. But there are tools like that available. And even some little things that maybe we could talk about is some cities require the business license number to be listed in the posting. And so that way it's easier to identify or flag a non-compliant property. Some of the challenges I have with more in the complexes is it's difficult to tell from what information is given, even with all the tools that our software utilizes, which unit in particular in, say, Bahia Vista are we talking about? Or which unit in Hamilton Cove? Because a lot of times in the posting, they'll, they'll say, you know, beautiful two-bedroom villa in Hamilton Cove, but they won't have anywhere in there the particular address. And so then there's, I don't want to give away their secrets, but there's mechanisms they have that help identify which particular property that listing is actually associated with. But what would help with the matching is if that listing had to post a license number in the listing, that'd kind of eliminate the guesswork in some instances. Currently, we don't have any requirement on the books that requires the business license to be included in the listing, but I have, just kind of talking to people in the industry, that's a kind of a simple correction that we can make or a simple, or at least I think it's a relatively simple correction we could potentially make.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea as long as we have enforcement. There was just an article in the Times about the city of Los Angeles doing the same, but then not putting any enforcement hours towards actually checking. So 37% of the listings were false business license numbers. So making sure that it actually doesn't match as well is part of that level of enforcement. So considering that amount of time on a regular basis to have that review would be great. The only other questions I had, had to do, one with units that have golf carts that they allow guests to use legally or illegally and looking at that level of enforcement and what's required for that. And then two, well, start with that, sorry.
Yeah, I gotta say, from an enforcement standpoint, we recognize that we, we have to address and we have to ramp that up in a number of different fronts and golf carts, golf carts is one of them. I mean, that's something that we might be in a better position to do on a Monday through Friday basis because we can follow up and check that. But, you know, we see it pop up quite often where something happens and it's like, oh, they're not even supposed to have, or a ticket gets issued and that they're not even supposed to have a golf cart with their unit, so.
Because it's not, the rule isn't that, it seems like people, there are some places on the flats that can actually give golf carts with them.
The only ones that are allowed to do that are the ones that live in grandfathered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, how many grandfathered? We got a lot of.
There weren't, there weren't a lot of grandfathered.
Okay, okay.
And then the last couple of questions, because all of these are great things to both make the process for city staff more efficient, make the funding for enforcement available. I think the bigger questions that I have are looking at city policy to see where the city can interact to be able to gain housing stock back into year-round housing and what we do with that and how we go after funds for that. Because unless there's an incentive so great, most homeowners will want to use the vacation rental for their own personal use part of the year, which means it's never going to be year-round housing. And so it's good to look at enforcement here, but it also is good to understand that, and I know we all have our opinions and our ideas, but it's not the enemy of housing because people who are buying homes for this type of use are also using them for themselves and wouldn't have had them for year-round housing anyway. And so the challenge of trying to look at whether that means looking at limitations of what is or isn't allowed to gain a license in the future. I'd be curious if we can pull numbers looking at the number of bedrooms per vacation rental that are currently out there. And I think it was one that we had seen on a previous report and I went looking for it, but couldn't easily find it this week. But I think part of the issue we're having with being able to secure workforce, improve interactions with the school and the community, is that so many of the units that are available for rent are much smaller. They don't allow for families to be here and live here year-round at a reasonable, affordable rate with the amount of money they're making. And so the challenge of trying to have year-round residents have impact on the community as we keep losing people for a number of reasons, not just housing, there's a lot of other reasons. But do we need to look at limiting vacation rentals to certain sizes? Would that help cut down on noise issues? Would that help increase the amount of homes that are larger that can accommodate families and allow for smaller units to be used for vacation rentals? And then another thing that I know, you know, when we first moved here, I feel like the issue was always the search for housing in the summertime. That everybody had housing between October and May and then come the summertime, everyone was looking for short-term housing because it was then turning into vacation rental use. And we don't see that anymore because it's a full-time year-round thing for most vacation rentals now. But a couple of countries have actually just recently implemented 90 days. You get 90 days to rent this as a vacation rental property and otherwise it has to be used for longer-term housing. And so I don't think that's a solution for us, but it's something that may generate other ideas, so.
We could grandfather stuff and then after, as time goes by do it.
It doesn't solve the problem, right? But I mean.
Well, no, no, so for the next five years you could do it and after that, then you can only have your 90 days. But that would only, and that would be summertime.
Right. The other solution that I have that's really extreme is I want people to have to make their housing year-round rental for a certain number of years before they can apply for a license. And then that way there's housing stock in use. It's going to get lost eventually, but at least for a short term, you've got housing available to use during that time.
The only thing we've got, and you can speak to this a lot better than I can, the only thing that we have there is if you have been renting it on a year-round basis, right? And you sell it.
Right now we can't, yeah.
Does it still have to, it has to sit vacant for two years?
Right. That's the part that I don't like, is it should be the opposite. It should have to be year-round housing, sitting unoccupied for two years and you literally are, if the person's not using it, pulling housing stock for two years.
But then what happens to that person after two years? If they have to go find new housing?
Hey, you go into it knowing that, at least you have a house for two years longer than what we've got right now. Otherwise it's empty or mostly empty.
And I don't know how many of those we have.
I know, but it's.
I understand the intent of it, but.
Yeah, yeah, but I see it's kind of asked backwards.
Yeah.
If that means we'd have a teacher maybe staying for at least two years.
Correct.
Or a doctor or a lawyer.
It's an idea, I don't know, but it's a great idea, but it's an idea.
So, so I'm new, so forgive me, but so the CUPs are, we're not issuing those anymore, but those that exist are grandfathered in? So why, why are we allowing them to sell it one time and then?
They legally have to.
Because there was, there was, there was a perceived value in what that CUP cost them when they acquired it. So we would be taking away something, taking away an asset. So it gets revolved around one time.
So in order to, if someone has a CUP, they have a vested right to continue that, that use. So what we did is we did an analysis that if you give them a reasonable time to get back their investment, we could stop the CUP from running with the land. And what we came up with is you get to transfer your property once with the CUP, so you can sell it for, if it has higher value, you can sell it once, but after that, first sale, the CUP disappears and you have to apply for a license. And that was the way that it was legal to start to get rid of long-term forever CUPs.
Got it. And so now there's, according to your report, Matt, there's 378 CUPs out there and only 33 licenses?
No, no, so 370, yeah, 378 under the old CUP or grandfathered system and 33 under the new transient rental license.
That's how many have come to fruition since we, they put that in.
Right, right.
And I think we have eliminated through the process of revocation, I think we eliminated three and I believe we had maybe up to 10 people just give up their CUPs for non-use. And so now we have the next group, which is the 71 that Matt's talked about. And the process would be, we would give them a letter saying that it's been a year since you've used it, give it up. And if they don't, then we can start the revocation process. And so we could, that, that number of the 411 could go down as through, we go through this process.
Okay.
And for council benefit, understand that when we made the jump from CUPs to vacation rental permitting, we spent a great deal of time talking about and communicating about saturation. Our fear, one of our fears, was that this transient license permit thing, we would have an explosion of transient license applications. Knowing that it takes a, in effect on both one-year budget, two, the uptake and/or downtake of year-round employee workforce housing. What we've seen is basically a status quo. Over 40 years, it's been roughly in the low threes of vacation rental permits, whether you define them as CUPs and/or, or the new process. Currently, if you take the 77 that are inactive out of the equation right now, we've actually, we're actually seeing right now a downtrend in vacation rental licenses issued by the city. Slight downtrend, but it's a downtrend. So in 40 years, that number really doesn't change. What's really driving that number is economy of scale. If you can occupy it as a year-round rental and generate $14,000, $18,000 a year, that's a decision that that homeowner has to make, however they want to use it. What we don't have a quantitative idea of is how many vacation rental homes or vacation homes are here that are not in the rental pool. And what I think we need to think about is a community. And this obviously is way above the planning pay grade, although we need to participate in this. What kind of mechanism can we as a city instill upon our community? Whether it's every business license, but something, some little token needs to go into the bucket of workforce housing. We don't have the ability to send our workers off in a car where they're driving, you know, two and a half hours to get to work, although we have a number of teachers that are commuting. It's not a viable solution for, for a long-term, you know, prosperous community. The best thing we ever did was get rid of the CUPs. You know, a conditional use permit issued by the city in perpetuity is bad planning. We've turned the corner now, we've made some strides into trying to solve the problem and I was waiting how long the animal in the room was going to sit there until you brought it up, housing. You know, vacation rentals are blamed for every housing issue in town. Now, you've all faced it before, you faced it before in planning and then now, now as a council member, I can't tell you how many people on the street I get hit with, well, if there was dignified housing. Look at how many employers in this community right now are running around buying homes to house their employees. So if the business community can afford to do it, the city can participate. Let's add a widget to every business license issue, not just vacation rentals, and develop a fund and now that we've got water, maybe we can build something. But don't tie it to low-income housing because we won't be able to make the quotas.
Right.
Right? So, that was Matt, probably the best presentation on the CUPs and the saturation and the bear economics. The one number that absolutely fried me was a majority of the vacation rental.
TOT.
TOT generation, well, the total sum of generation I know is relevant, okay? I mean, I watched you guys spend a million dollars today, the things that weren't even on your budget. So I get it. But what shocks me is people are holding on to a vacation rental license and majority of them are only producing 10 grand a year. They're not even offsetting their property taxes, so to have this.
Sorry, the 10,000 is what they paid the city, so it'd be 80,000.
It'd be 80,000 dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Still, peanuts in comparison to the money that they're spending to develop that asset to come here and take a vacation.
Definitely.
And not, not enough of them are spending their money in the dive shop.
Your beautiful dive shop.
Yeah, so now that it's raining and we've got water, now's the time to talk. Let's, you know, get all the stakeholders together as a council and say, hey, let's get the business community to work together and get the animal company in the room and get the dirt and.
Yeah, I agree, I totally agree.
Hammer and nails.
Yeah.
Our enemy is not the vacation rental.
No, I agree with that as well. Yeah, it's very helpful to the city.
It is.
But I did want to bring up one thing about saturation. I just can't, and granted it's on one side of the street, but on Sumner, on one side of the street, there are 27 parcels, 16 of them are vacation rentals. There may be duplexes there, but 16 on one side of the street are vacation rentals. The opposite side, there's four on the whole street. So to me, that, that's saturation, even if it's not going all the way around. And it just seems that that part of Sumner is really bad. And if there's all those vacation rentals, why is it so hard to park one in Sumner? Just a question.
Well, and I was also wondering, is it, the reason I asked about the multiple, the multiple owners, you know? I'm concerned about people that are just looking at this town solely as an investment and they're coming in and they're buying up homes and they're immediately vacation rentals. Is it possible to limit how many properties you can buy solely for going into the business of making a little mini hotel?
Okay, Scott, are you? Okay, Scott, are you still on the call?
Yeah, um.
Sorry.
That one would be tricking, the Coastal Commission probably wouldn't like it. What the Coastal Commission has done throughout cities is when cities are too restrictive on CUPs, transient occupancy, the Coastal Commission sues the cities, and so far, most cities have lost that. You'd also run into a problem. The Planning Commission could consider that as a factor, but I wouldn't advise having a bright line rule on that. I think you'd get in trouble.
And what would prevent somebody from just forming another LLC to purchase that property?
Okay, well, let's raise all the fees then.
Well, yeah, and so, what you could do though, to address the point on workforce housing, you could adopt what's called a mitigation fee. You could do a study. This doesn't go to the voters. It's a, it's a study like you did on your, um, uh, certain fees, where you look at the cost of transient rental occupancy in terms of these homes becoming, taken off the market, and you attach a fee to each license. And then you use that money, you put it in a pool for workforce housing. So, you could do that. It's a long process. You have to give a study and a report as, as to tie transient occupancies into reduction of housing stock, come up with a fee, and then you could put that in a city fund used just toward the development of workforce housing. So, that is legal if you wanted to go down that route.
Could we get an idea of what that cost would be to do that study? And see if it's something that we wanna add to the budget this year or next year? But I don't.
I can, I can get an estimate of that and see there, I will tell you the cost of doing these studies have doubled the last couple of years, because there's a lot of lawsuits out there that are challenging the studies. And so, the people doing them have gotten a little cautious. But, um, I will, I will, uh, I'll get some estimates just as an information item, and I'll, and I'll, I'll bring this to the council during city attorney comments.
Okay. So, it's costing more for the study because they're finally having to do it right?
Well, no, there's just been a lot more, um, there's been some recent statutes, and some studies didn't do it right and they got sued. And so, now everyone's cautious.
Does that cost just fall on the city, or could it be between all the stakeholders for the study?
I mean, we'll get a cost, we'll get a rough idea of the cost, and then start figuring out how we wanna start going about addressing it.
But I wouldn't put the work, I wouldn't put the fee just on vacation rentals. I'd put the fee on all, all business licenses.
Exactly, yeah, business license fees, no?
Well, we currently, remember, we currently have a requirement for new businesses. If they're adding people, they have to, uh, for each two employees, full-time employees during the summer, they have to, uh, provide a, a, a housing unit. We already have VAT fee for new businesses that are adding.
Yeah, well, coming to think about that, remember the whole deal about bonds? And they weren't supposed to have any more employees, but they, we were, I think about the time that we were supposed to audit them on the number of employees they had, because they said there shouldn't have been more. And then I think COVID hit or something. And so, now their numbers have been less. Now, they're rehiring again. So, I don't know how many years we said we could go forward to do an audit on the number of employees.
We can, we can do an audit at any time, at any time. We have the number of employees they had when they opened, and if they go above that, for every two employees, they have to provide a housing unit.
And that, that would include the people that they have coming? They had a lot of people coming on the boat every day like everybody else. Do we count those numbers as well?
It's employees, yes. It's, it's full-time employees in the summer.
On, on tapping into what Annie just said, I also wanna talk about transferring employees to different locations to not have to create housing for new construction, like, you know, transferring.
Would you bug in that more, girl?
Yeah, well, yeah. So, but I'm saying, because I think here we are creating, allowing that, and we don't, we, it's called enforcement. So, we can't enforce it, so we're just banking on what they're saying or telling us when, um, that location was supposed to be shut down for the location on, on Front Street, and that location is still being occupied for events. So, I mean, there's that. So, I, I don't like that transferring, transferring employees to different properties and saying certain properties are being shut down when they're actually not.
Kind of like water. I think that, and I apologize for calling that out so, so aggressively, but, um, I will also say that they're one of the only entities looking at creating housing currently, along with the city. So, to their credit at least, they are looking at that as solutions happening and going after things to do that. But yes.
I'm just saying, I don't like.
Right. It needs to be similar to the conservancy vehicles. You don't just get to put your sticker wherever you want to. It has to be on a specific thing.
That's exactly my guess.
How does it work when they have housing and they don't use it year-round? They just, you know, how they bring in the employees during the summer, then the property sits empty the rest of the year. And they, I mean, it's a good amount of apartments up there, like Monkey Town. That's what I'm referring to, sorry.
Well, and that could be part of this housing conversation, because you could put teachers in there for nine months, for example. You know, if they sort, and that would be income for them as well, for whoever those people are that have it.
Would, would it be possible if somebody bought a house that was, um, that, that would take away year-round housing? And they wanna make it a vacation rental? So, would it be possible to say, okay, well, since you took away year-round housing, now you have to build an ADU to put, to, because you can't rent those short-term? And if the property that they bought didn't have enough room for an ADU, then pay an equivalent amount of what it would cost for an ADU, and then put that into a fund for workforce housing?
That's the mitigation.
If someone just buys a property, that takes it out of, that doesn't make any sense. If you're just buying a property and you are, it's a vacation home for you, you want someone to pay to build something?
Um, well, if it's, if it's a person that's, like, in, in, in investment situation where they're not gonna.
How are you supposed to determine it's an investment situation?
Well, I'm, I'm just asking.
Vacation home.
Well, and, and the, and the fine line that, that we all walk is that eventually, once you encumber one set of rules for one property, another set of rules for another, one for another business license, you then, you either do one of two things. You either drive everybody underground, and they say, hey, you know what? I'm gonna buy this place and I'm gonna use it when I use it. And then they've got a million friends, you know, using it. I think if you tie it all to a business license and work with the business community, you know, to tie, use your example of bonds, right? Every business on this island, every business license issued in the last, I mean, we haven't grown in business licenses, I mean, substantially, right? But our population is more than doubled since the time I lived here. You know, all of those people live somewhere, they all work somewhere. All the businesses have grown, because we've gone from a seasonal economy to a year-round economy, and all of that impacts housing.
Sure.
All of it. And I get your concern, and, and everybody's, everybody's talking the same tongue here. You know, that we have a housing problem on the island. And until we push forward to solve the housing problem, we can point fingers at bonds, we can point fingers at every vacation rental, we can point fingers at the dive shop. We hired two new guys, we bought it, we spent a million-three to put people in housing. You know, and it's what we had to do. You know, there was no other options. You know, we wanna attract quality employees. We wanna attract quality members of the community. Depending on the handful of those that, that will live on a boat out in the harbor and, and/or an anchorage, that wasn't, that wasn't our cup of tea. You know, so, the business community, I think, will step in, in, in with the city. And the island company, I know they provide more housing than anybody else. You know, not if all of it's occupied. A good chunk of it I wouldn't live in, but it's housing.
Right.
The other discussion is just something that had been on the, the books before COVID and kind of got pushed aside because of the budget and COVID, is, uh, the transient occupancy inspections, the.
Residential inspection.
CUP and residential inspections, um, looking at that program as well. So, just throwing that out there as a review, and hopefully bring it back.
That's just a matter of staff. And, and we weren't, and we weren't so concerned about looking at the CUPs because they're well-monitored by CIVR or barter, whatever, but it, but it's the.
I think some are and some are not.
Well, perhaps, but, but my priority when we.
Residential.
Did it, but it hadn't been able to get started four years ago was our local resident. Which creates another problem. As you go in there and you find out it's uninhabitable, what do you do with them?
Correct.
You know, and then they fix them up. Well, now the rents have gone down, right? So, you've got this whole, it's something we gotta work out.
You compare the county title to how many dwelling units are on each parcel, there's a whole bunch of legally non-conforming units or illegally conforming.
And then what do you do about them?
Right.
Boy, the can of worms are opening now.
They were going to.
On that note.
So, anyway, okay. So, the question is, do we feel we need a saturation meeting sometime in the future? If we do, I don't think it's urgent, but, um.
I don't want it to be forgotten either, so I do want it sooner than later.
Yeah. So, what we'll do, if I can suggest, then, you know, we'll, we'll take the steps we need that we talked about from an enforcement standpoint. We can do that now. Um, we'll get something on your agenda, uh, this year, uh, address the saturation end, and between now and then, bring you some samples of what other cities are doing, what other communities are doing, see anything that might work, might not work for us, and we can have that conversation again.
And a few better numbers will come through with a new process.
So, I, I'm kind of in line with what Dave's saying is action items. Take action on the properties that either don't have a business license or have not had any active rentals. And that's, you know, that's 75, as many as 100 properties out of that 400. Require each CUP to obtain a separate license. I don't, based on what Scott said, I don't think we need to modify the code. Just modify our interpretation of, of the code for that. Update the business license information to identify the 24-hour contact, and then require a license for those contacts. If you're listed as 24-hour contact, you need a business license to perform that. And then look into the requiring license numbers to be posted on the websites or other ways to improve enforcement. And that's kind of mine, but. And then, Michael, you wanted percentage of rentals against the housing stock as a whole? Fee development for workforce housing? And, uh, number one on the list, renewal fee structure, which is something that we should already have had, but.
Great.
That matched my list as well. Very good.
All right.
And all of this is gonna go on the back of finance?
It's a team effort.
Okay.
We have a new assistant city manager.
Yeah, exactly. I was gonna say, Jocelyn just got some work handed to her today.
Oh, my gosh, okay.
And, uh, before mayor, before you adjourn, do we, do we, can we check to see if we have any comments, public comments on, on the joint session? I believe, I thought we might have had one.
We just had one, but he didn't get the link.
There, there was, no, hang on, Devin's running up here, so.
We've got a couple of people in the audience. Does anybody wanna make a comment? Who's the young man in the back?
My name's Brian Hall. Hello, Avalon City Council. I'm writing to ask for a change to the city code to be considered. Currently, transient rentals within the flats does not allow to include a golf cart or autowet in the rental. We are requesting an exemption to be made for this rule to allow properties with off-street parking and an electric vehicle to be allowed to be, to include a vehicle in the rental. Since so many guests asked if they can use our cart and tell us that the only cart rental companies, that the only cart rental companies quote-unquote sell out to the cruise ship people, people complain about not being able to visit further parts of town or having to walk on the streets at night. The impact would be minimal, since many rentals do not have off-street parking. And this would incentivize the ones that do to trade their gas carts for an electric cart. This would also have zero impact on the street parking and overnight parking, and it would create a better experience for tourists to see the island. We appreciate your consideration for this exemption to the rule. Sincerely, George Paquette, 320 Catalina Avenue.
So, we put this to the Planning Commission, correct, for their discussion?
So, if we are done, I, I think what we would do is adjourn the council meeting and then retain the Planning Commission, and then move to their agenda, their short agenda.
Can we take a bathroom break?
Absolutely. Let's, let's adjourn the council.
And then Kathy's going on a bathroom break.
And we'll resume, resume with the balance of the Planning Commission meeting shortly.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, everyone, for counsel.
Are there transient rentals on your agenda tonight?
One.
Okay, where is it?
Um, um.
Flat, uh, one in town.
Oh, very, very short.
Yeah, very short.
Perfect place, yes.
But that?
Perfect place.
All right. I've got pretty much all the revenue. I'm just like.
So, we're done, right?
Yes, we're done.
We're gonna move?
Yeah, I don't think.
See ya.
We're all in.
State Sequel Guidelines, Minor Alterations in Land Use Limitations, Which Do Not Result in Changes in Land Use or Density. The project requires a coastal permit under Section 9-8.102 of the Avalon Municipal Code, and the project is not within the 300-foot appealable zone. City staff have not received any comments in favor or in opposition of the transit rental license. Staff is recommending the planning commission find the project categorically exempt under Section 15305 of the State Sequel Guidelines, Minor Alterations in Land Use Limitations, adopt the findings necessary as outlined in the staff report to support approval of the coastal development permit, including that the project is not within the 300-foot appealable zone, and find the application is allowed under the 2023 annual growth policy. That concludes my presentation.
I have a question.
Yes.
For staff. I don't see an application in here.
Application was included in the staff report.
I can... I guess my question is, what was the unit used for prior to this application?
His parents lived in the unit. His mother passed away recently, and his father has moved to the mainland under their care.
Okay, so it's just it wasn't a year round or until his family...
No.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff before we open a public hearing? Is good. Okay, we're going to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this matter, please come up, state your name and address, and tell us your story.
Any other things prepared? I was going to be a visitor. My name's Brian Corolla. I'm the son of Rhonda Corley Corolla. I'm sorry. I like to mention my mom did pass away last year. My father, because it was a...
Any else wishing to speak on this matter? We'll close the public hearing discussion. Sorry to hear about your family, Mom. Very sad.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, so Commissioner Glass?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Say?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Romero. So, Scott, I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven ayes. It's unanimous.
You got us. Okay, item number three.
Okay, item number three is a, first of all, I want to make sure that everybody has received, you probably received a different version, but you also received this tonight. This is the applicant who intended on being here tonight, but the votes were canceled. Temporary use permit, coastal development permit authorizing the operation of a temporary immersive projection dome experience within the commercial exempt under Section 15303C of the State Sequel Guidelines, new construction or conversion of small structures. The applicant, Mark Davidson of Immersive Education LLC, proposes construction of approximately 690-square-foot platform with a temporary wood and fiberglass dome structure. Structure will be between 15, 17 feet tall at its center point, 20 to 22 feet in diameter, with ramped access and compliance with ADA standards. The site located on Catalina Avenue and Third Streets, primarily used as a tour plaza, surrounded by a mix of other commercial uses, including retail, food, beverage, mini golf, and residential areas. As a temporary use, it's proposed to start July 1st with a six-month trial period, operating from 1:00 to 9:00 p.m. daily. Occupancy is 22 people, which would include two staff members. As I indicated, it's a dome structure. It'll feature a undersea mural with exterior lighting at night. Traffic is anticipated to be primarily pedestrian as a form of access. Trash will all be existing public bins. No food or beverage will be served from the location. Standard utilities and noise shall be not to exceed 60 decibels from measured 150 feet away from the dome. General Plan, land use zoning compliance, the annual growth policy. Staff recommends the planning commission make the finding as required by 2023 growth policy, that the proposed business operation is able to be permitted. As a site plan, the project requires site plan approval as the requirement of a CUP and coastal development permit disqualifies it as a minor renovation as defined in the municipal code necessitating a public hearing and planning commission review. I'm sorry, review of the following principles. In these three, I'll just hit the compliance. Number one, the proposed project is temporary in nature and complies with all provisions of the Avalon Municipal Code. The project will receive all necessary approvals for the temporary use. Item two, the applicant's scope of work is limited and mostly temporary or portable in nature, as well as within the existing footprint, and will not result in any nonconforming circumstances. Item three is in compliance, the design of the platform and structure do not involve any permanent alterations to the site, which is of adequate size and currently underdeveloped. The dome structure deliberately does not match existing structures in the commercial district. However, the design transforms the location with a design which is suitable for its recreational purpose. As a temporary project, this project may be authorized by a temporary use permit as provided in Avalon Municipal Code. We would indicate from the environmental determination, the project is categorically exempt under Section 15303 of the State Sequel Guidelines, new construction or conversion of small structures. CDP, the project is located within the coastal zone within 300 feet appealable seaward boundary of the coastal commission jurisdiction. It was determined the project qualifies as a development and would require, I'm sorry, and would require the local issuance of a CDP in accordance with the Avalon Municipal Code, Section 9-8, dependent on the following considerations. Just highlighting those, the use is consistent with the goals and objectives of the public access and recreational policies of the California Coastal Act. The use is in conformance with the certified local coastal programs for the city of Avalon, which include the Avalon General Plan, the local coastal plan for Avalon, as well as the Avalon zoning and affordable housing ordinances. The project does not involve a residential development project, so the affordable housing ordinance is not applicable. The use has received all necessary local approvals, issueable by the planning commission, including the growth ordinance, preapproval in concept, together with the water allocation as may be required. No water allocation is necessary for this project. The use has been cleared with respect to environmental regulations of SEQA as necessary. For all development seaward of the nearest public highway to the shoreline, the proposed development conforms to the public access and recreational policies of Chapter 3 of the Coastal Act. Finally, the staff's recommendations would be to adopt the findings to approve a site plan, direct staff to issue a temporary use permit for the proposed project with the understanding that after the temporary use is elapsed, it would come back for final approval if that's the desire of the applicant. Number three, adopt the findings to support approval of coastal development permit, including finding the project located within 300 feet of the appealable zone. Four, find the project consistent with the 2023 growth policy. Five, find the project categorically exempt from environmental review under SEQA. Six, find the use is prohibited, that the use is prohibited from utilizing any exterior amplified music or sound at the proposed site. And finally, number seven, find that the exterior lighting shall be of such a nature so as not to distribute light upward or off the proposed site, in addition to any conditions the planning commission might want. And the applicant, as I indicated, is out there and available for any questions.
Okay, before we open the public hearing, anybody have any questions of staff? Let's open it. And Mark, if you'd like to give us a little presentation, please go ahead.
Sure. Hi, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great. Nice to meet you all. Sorry I couldn't be there in person. I was hoping to be there. I prefer to meet people personally. And I apologize in advance that all of you will have received an email when I was panicking because I didn't have a Zoom link earlier on, and I was watching you all and had no means of communicating. So you can ignore my email when you go and check your inboxes later on. Let me start off, you should all have a copy of the slide presentation, and I appreciate your time on this. I'm a scientist by training. I got a PhD at Princeton University doing geo-microbiology and chemistry, but I've transitioned into becoming an underwater filmmaker, you can think of me as. And so I film underwater in 8K resolution in 360 degrees, and we create immersive underwater experiences. And so the goal is to put one of our immersive dome theaters down on Catalina Island in the island plaza in concert with the Catalina Island Company. If you go to Slide 2, it gives you kind of a cross-sectional view through that, so an audience would sit in there, and there's a single projector in the center of the dome theater, projecting half of the 360-degree videos onto the dome theater screen that goes up and around the audience. We're anticipating having two 30-minute showings per hour with about a five-minute turnaround across them. I think the time said 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. I heard mentioned, we're kind of flexible on the times right now. We haven't finalized exactly when that would be, but we would do everything consistent with, you know, whatever codes compliance is necessary from the city. We'd have timed walk-ups available, but most of our ticketing would occur in the Long Beach Ferry Terminal. We're going to have a 360-degree video sphere playing a trailer video, if you will, that people can link hopefully directly through the Catalina Island Company's ticketing process with a QR code on the base of it. It'll have air conditioning, it'll be fixed seating, all to fire code compliance, so that we know moving chairs and those sorts of things. But they will have either reclined backs or tiltable backs. We're still working out the exact final designs for those. We anticipate having a, hopefully, a local manager who's an on-island person, so we're beginning the job hunt for that person now. And then probably a couple of hourly employees working at all times, so they're basically two people working there at any given time. Slide 3 is just a very crude map from Google Earth, showing the location of it. We do have to expand the existing peeler poles that kind of wrap around where the picnic tables currently are on the southern edge of the island plaza to fit the 23-foot-wide deck that we need to put the dome onto. So we would be just expanding those poles out on the eastern side, this kind of a little indent. We'd just be widening those to match the western edge, so to make it a proper L shape on there. And there'd be no other site alterations, other than patching the asphalt holes that moving those poles would incur. We would also be doing some ground anchoring as well, probably through helical piles or some other to be determined. We're waiting on the final engineering design and design drawings from an engineering firm right now. I expect to have those in the next week. And then we would also be looking to install our own electrical panel associated with the mini golf course. We'd have a sub-panel with a meter and installing a breaker box, a lockable breaker box down by our, kind of on the southeast end of where the dome is proposed to go. There is existing conduit that runs across there, I believe, for the mini golf course's exterior lighting, but we'll obviously have to have all of that assessed by an electrician to make sure that our power draw can be done to code. Slide 4 is just a 3D rendering, an artist's rendering of what that dome would look like looking across the plaza from where the ticketing tower currently exists. 5 is a little bit closer up. And 6, kind of from the backside, looking through the island plaza location towards the west. Slide 7 is the, gives a little bit of detail about the dome itself. As mentioned, the exterior will be a maximum of 22 feet to fit on our 23-foot-wide deck. The center point currently is at about 16 feet. It'll be somewhere between 15 and 17 feet. There are no overhead obstructions there, no overhanging trees, no power lines, no anything like that there to be concerned about. As I mentioned before, the deck itself will be anchored into the ground to serve as foundational support, if you will, versus ballasting the deck by putting weight in the wooden deck itself. On the front end of the deck will be an ADA compliant wheelchair ramp at a 1 to 12 slope. That length and that slope does not require handrails, so it'll just be a smooth ramp transitioning down to the asphalt lot that currently exists there. After the deck is built, we will build a frame structure with two doors using local contractors where possible. And the dome, the dome itself is a fiberglass dome that will be sealed, bonded, and then painted with projection paint on the inside. That will be installed on the wooden structure at a 20-degree angle, and then there'll be an inflatable and all-weather fire retardant vinyl exterior that gets attached to the outside of it, giving it a smoother appearance on the outside. As I mentioned, two means of entry/egress per fire code. We'll have fire extinguishers available, ABC-type fire extinguishers. There'll be exit signs, self-illuminating above both of the entry and exit doors. We will have perimeter and deck illumination at night. I noted the comment earlier about no lighting facing, pointing upward, so we will accommodate that for sure, and only have downward-facing lights. Slide 8 is a tentative interior seating plan, so the interior of the dome itself will have a 20-foot diameter versus the 22-foot exterior. This is just a current proposed seating plan with a maximum capacity of 20 seated audience members, and then two potential standing staff inside the back if it's raining or something like that. I don't think I need to go through much more on this. There are, you know, we will absolutely observe all of the relevant fire code and ADA compliance items regarding minimum widths for moving people around, so the, most of it will be 36 inches or three foot wide throughout, and then where there is a narrowing point, it'll only be 32 inches for a 24-foot length at any given time. And I've shown that on there as the two foot eight. That's the narrowest part of the seating plan. The projector, as I mentioned, will be in the center, and all of it will either be row seating with tiltable or reclatable backs, or individual seats. We're still in the process of figuring out which we're going to do for those. Slide 9 just shows kind of the various construction elements, starting with the deck on the upper left, which, and so that's kind of phase one, is just getting the deck and the ramp built, and we're going to do this in two phases that we'll see on the final slide. Then there'll be the 2x6 wooden frame structure that will be built and the dome installed on top of that, and the lower right-hand corner of that just shows kind of what the interior shell of the structure would look like. We plan to have most of it constructed in a modular fashion, so it can actually be constructed off-site and then just assembled on-site, so minimizing construction noise and those kind of things at the actual location that the carpenters or whoever's manufacturing can do it in their shop and then bring it to the site and just assemble. So that's it for Slide 9. Slide 10 shows a recent, last week I was out there just looking at where we might be able to draw power from with Catalina Island Company, and there is a panel on the backside of the mini golf offices that we should be able to have a sub-panel come off of that will be metered, so that we can pay our own separate utilities from that. There's already outlets on the picnic table side of the mini golf course that have power, so we're going to have an electrician determine, you know, whether we can use that existing conduit that's bringing that power to there and minimize our costs that way and install a breaker box over by, right by our dome location that you'll see on the subsequent slide, Slide 11, the line management slide. You can see a little lightning bolt down in the southeast corner there. We'd probably attach it to one of the existing peeler poles and have it locked, so we have a simple access to that as needed if we need to have that. In terms of line management, we are cognizant that this is, you know, an active location where there are tour buses coming through all of the time for the Catalina Island Company's tours, and so that we've given plenty of thought to that, and so we're going to use the existing crosswalk that is on the western, northwestern side of our dome location, and we will probably work with the Catalina Island Company to refurbish that because the line, the paint lines on that are not very visible right now, and it may be painted to kind of match the style of our exterior cover on our dome to kind of jazz it up a little bit, make it a bit more of an interesting crosswalk, but at least make it more visible than it currently is, either our cross or Catalina Island Company's, that's to be determined. But then inside of that, we do want to have some sort of line management system to, if there are, you know, our goal is obviously to have as many people come through here as possible, but we don't want to have people waiting for extraordinary amounts of time, hence having a timed ticketed entry. But we'd have a simple line management system utilizing the space as best as possible, as shown here, where we'd have, you know, weather-resistant stanchions that would also serve as having educational content on them as well, so that people, when they experience the underwater video experience inside, are not being bombarded by facts and information. We want people to have an immersive moment where they get to sit and just be with these creatures or in these environments without being spoken at the whole time. So some of that educational component will occur on the few minutes wait on the way in. Obviously, exit is not a problem. People will just leave through the right-hand door shown there and use the sitting crosswalk to cross back across the island plaza. The last slide shows the current schedule, so we're hoping to install the deck and the ramp component, which would not serve as a trip hazard or anything like that, by mid-May. Probably take about a week to do that. As I mentioned earlier, it's expanding the existing peeler pole footprint, patching the asphalt where necessary, or using those, the holes created from that to install a ground anchoring system that the deck would then be attached to and leveled on. And then as part of that, we would also do the electrical sub-panel distribution down to the, down to the site as well. And then probably in early June, so, you know, maybe a week or two after that, we've got a pretty tight construction schedule here, we're still on schedule, would be in early June for about a couple of weeks to then construct the frame. It may not even take two weeks, it may only take a week, depending on how much of the structure is fabricated off-site and then just assembled on-site. It could be a lot quicker than that. But we anticipate at worst that being about a two-week process to build the wooden frame on top of the deck, install the dome, and install the cover. And then we would obviously spend some time doing the interior finishing all to fire code and those kind of things as well. During the weeks leading up to a soft launch on, tentatively right now, Saturday, June 24th, when we would invite people from the planning commission, local businesses, we want to just have a meet and greet with the local businesses and local community and have a free event for people to come and for us to test out the experience itself and how it's received, make minor modifications as needed in the upcoming week, and then have the official public launch and a ticketed event starting on July 1st. So thank you for having me, and again, I apologize for the panicked email in your inboxes afterwards.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody have questions, Mark, while we've got them here? Comments?
I think it's awesome. I think it's amazing.
Oh, great. Thank you. I appreciate hearing that.
That's educational, something different for us.
Yeah, I'm always looking for something to do with the kids, so...
Yeah, yeah, I agree. More things to do in the town, the better off we all are.
Great. I'm pleased to hear that. And as, you know, I recognize this is a, you know, we're applying for a temporary use permit here with a view to potentially, depending if it's working for us and Catalina Island Company, to move it into a more long-term thing. You know, we have flexibility on this to have special events and those kind of things as well, or expand our business hours to get the morning cruise visitors if they have nothing to do and those sorts of things all, you know, as well. But we can also have different content in there, maybe collaborate with the Conservancy or the Ridley Institute, where maybe a lot of people don't get out to. We can do things like that as well. So we're looking forward to becoming part of the community, and we're, you know, we want, as I said, the local people to be hired on this. I don't necessarily want people to have to ferry over the whole time, so...
Great. Entertain a motion?
How about a question?
How about a question?
It sounds like the intent is to test this out, see if it works. If it works, it sounds like as an applicant you intend to stay, correct?
I mean, at this point, I don't know. I, that's, if, you know, if the response from the public is okay, I would be open to that, but right now, the plan is a six-month period.
So procedurally, if he does care to extend it, can the city managers just approve an extension, or does it need to come back before planning to get approved for a further duration?
Extend it for another temporary or extend it for a permanent? Because it would have to, my understanding is they come back to planning if they move for a temporary use at that point, or a permanent use.
Yeah, it's only noticed if he has to come back to planning.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. Any other discussion?
I think it's a fantastic idea. Tomorrow couldn't be soon enough, build it.
Agreed.
Okay. We have a vote?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Say?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Okay. Unanimous, Scott?
Great, thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, it looks like item number four is then continue.
Yeah, we'd ask item number four, if I could just be continued to the April 19th meeting. Couple things that we're finishing up on there, and hopefully it'll be, hopefully it'll be before you next month.
Okay. Anybody else have anything commissioners to report?
Other than goodnight, Tony.
I have, I have one thing, actually.
Scott?
As you know, in the last couple of years, Isaac Rosen has been your planning commission attorney. He was just appointed tonight as city attorney for another city, and so we'll be replacing him or Scott with Scott Shapes. Scott has been working with Avalon the last year. He's been doing the bulk of the work with staff reports, and so at the next meeting, Scott will be attending it. I will still make the occasional appearance. But Isaac is, he got a big promotion at work, and he's landed a city, so...
Great.
Congratulations.
Good for him. Yep. Thanks for your time tonight as well, Scott.
It was easier than I thought.
I'd just like to add that tonight, the council approved, myself going forward, with Sagecrest for a planning consultant. They, I met with them, interviewed with them a week or two ago. They're going to have, their intent would be to have staff here present during the planning commission's meetings to present. They'll be working on staff reports. We've been doing them all in-house, scrambling, doing the best we can in this interim period, so they'll be taking over those duties, and we'll gauge that and see how it goes. And if that works, we will continue that. If not, we'll continue searching for a director.
Will they be, will they be here a certain amount of time?
They'll be here a certain amount of time during the month, but they'll be here present during meetings, weather permitting.
Could you kind of email us their schedule of when they will be in, just in case, you know, in office?
Absolutely. Absolutely, and then we will also be scheduling through, Donna will be scheduling meetings for them on their behalf with both applicants, contractors, and planning commission members, if you want, whether in person or Zoom, so we'll have their schedule available in the planning department.
Thank you, that's exciting.
It is.
Also, a big thank you to Donna for picking up all the slack, you know, when you've had to, and to the city manager today. Yeah, thank you, guys.
One housekeeping item, because item number four was a public hearing on that one, could we just open the public hearing and then move to continue so we don't have to re-notice again?
Sounds good. We're going to open the public hearing on number four, and we will continue it.
You can do that by voice vote. You don't need to take oral votes anymore because you're not complying with AB 361.
Okay. So we're good. Continue it, and say goodnight, Tony.
Well, let's count a motion and second at least.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I will, I will so, I will so move to continue.
I was just going, Scott.
I know, I know, Bart. You haven't changed a bit, have you?
No. I'm hungry. I'll entertain a motion to continue.
I will make that motion to continue item number four to the next available meeting.
I'll second.
We have a second?
No vote.
No vote, Scott? We're good?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Goodnight, Tony.
Goodnight, John Boy.
Goodnight, Tony. Goodnight, everyone.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.